Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. We are now reconvening the Taxation, Finance and Economic Development Committee on Bills number 16-69, 16-0670, and 16-0671. I'm Carl Stokes, Chair of the Committee. To my immediate left is Councilman Bill Henry of the 4th Council District and Vice Chair of the Committee. To his left is Councilwoman Ricky Spector, 5th District. To her -- thank you. To her left is Councilman Ed Reisinger, the 10th District, a member of the Committee. To his left is Councilwoman Helen Holton of the 8th Council District, who is a member of the Committee. And at the far left is President of the City Council, Bernard C. Jack Young. Two members to my left is Councilman Eric Costello, 11th District, and to his right, I meant right, and to his right is Councilman Brandon Scott, also, anyway, also a member of the 2nd District, not a member of the Committee, obviously a member of the City Council. Councilman, how are you tonight? To my immediate right is Jennifer Coats, who is staff to the Committee. Couple of housekeeping notes. Please, all cell phones should be off or on vibrate. If you care to sign in to testify this evening, you can do that downstairs. We will be taking all of those who signed last week but who did not have an opportunity to testify first, but everyone who does sign tonight will be asked to testify tonight. We will be here, hopefully, until everyone has completed testimony. We have a curfew of 10:00 p.m., and so we will be here if needed until that time. There is -- the agency reports have all been received, and I announced last week how those reports were received. Public hearings have also been advertised. Before we end this evening, I will announce the next session, which will be a work session for this particular set of bills. So I will do that before this evening is over. We do have two members of the mayor's staff here this evening also, Ms. Gibson and Mr. Smolien, as well as other agency and department officials who are part of us this evening. The order that we will do tonight is that we will, in the order that we received from a week ago, bring forward those individuals who were not, did not have an opportunity to testify last week. I am allowing that those who have signed to testify, who intended to bring others to the table with them as a panel, may do so. When your name is called, you may bring the other members to the table with you. Individuals will be given two minutes, and we will have a clock, two minutes to give testimony this evening. You may also, and you should if you can, provide us with written testimony, at least 17 copies, or give us whatever numbers copies you have. And there are other staff members here, and we will duplicate if necessary. Panels will have 10 minutes total, 10 minutes total to speak. There may or may not be questions from the Committee or the council members, and whatever time that takes, obviously, will be allowed by the Chair. And so we're just about to begin with public testimony. At some point, MUNICAP will be presenting some comments that they wish to bring forward that we didn't get to a week ago. Let us begin with President Jack Young's comments.
Thank you, Chairman Stokes. I just want to let everyone know that I've met with just about every organization that have contacted my office, and what I said to everyone is I want everyone to get in the room and try to work this out. We can't move forward if we can't get all of this stuff worked out, and that's my promise, and I'm just encouraging everybody to get in the room. It's not that hard to negotiate. No one will get everything that they want, but we have to get the best deal for Baltimore. So that's my promise.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kimberly Mooney. Is Ms. Mooney here this evening? Thank you. Let me just mention the next four names also. Looks like Mike Henderson from the ABC, Cassrey or Casey Larkin.
That one's been scratched.
Scratched, not speaking, not speaking, not speaking. Frank Boston, Kimmy Darrell.
Not speaking, not speaking.
Not speaking? That's, Kimmy's not speaking, is that right? All right, all right. Well, Kimberly, Ms. Mooney, would you begin, please? And bring the mic close to you, please.
Is that close enough? All right, my name's Kimberly Mooney. I am a school teacher in Baltimore City. I have been for the last 11 years, and I'm here with other members of the Baltimore Education Coalition. And I come to you because I'm very concerned about the impact this is going to have on our school system. Is it possible to formally have the panel come up? Because you said if we were here with a group that we could...
I'm sorry, what do you want to do?
Have the rest of the people that are here with me come up as well?
Yes, that's 10 minutes total now.
That's fine.
10 minutes total, and a panel is more than two people. All right, let's go. Let's go.
Okay, so I wanted to thank Mr. Costello, Councilman Costello, for bringing up the issue of the impact this was going to have on schools last week, but I felt that at the end of that meeting, folks were kind of let off the hook, and there was not really any sort of concrete next step or commitment that was made to make sure that the city school system was going to be held harmless from this deal. The issue, just to reiterate, is that the state penalizes us, in one way of looking at it, anytime that the tax base increases. So as this property is built, the schools are going to get less funding because the state looks at it as though we have a greater tax base. So the school system stands to lose hundreds of millions of dollars as a result of that. I believe the Baltimore Education Coalition has delivered a letter to you with some proposals as to how to address that in any agreement that's made with a developer. Possible ways to address that would be for the developer to agree to pay the difference, basically, in what the state is cutting in aid to us as a result of the increased value in the property if the state doesn't fix their formula for determining how much aid the schools deserve. I think that's a really fair way to address it. We have a three-year hold on the funding formula right now so that we won't be penalized for the increase in value of this property, but this is set to take place over decades. So three years is not enough time for us to have a guarantee. We need a guarantee that's going to last the entirety of the time that this project is going to be taking place. So I'd ask you to seriously consider the proposal of the Baltimore Education Coalition to make sure that the school system funding is not impacted by the increased wealth that this represents. And I just want to couch that in the setting of what the district looks like right now. At the end of the school year, we lost 171 staff members from layoffs. So we're already operating on bare bones. We can't afford to lose more money. So as great of a deal as this looks like, we have to understand that we already are in a place of hurt in the school system. So we just can't afford to lose anything else. And I don't know, Frank, if you wanted to say anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Stokes, members of the Committee and City Council. I'm Frank Patonella, Senior Education Advocate with the ACLU of Maryland and co-chair of the Baltimore Education Coalition. And there hasn't been a lot of time devoted to the very important issue of Port Covington's impact on education funding. BEC is asking for city schools to be held harmless on any losses of state funding due to wealth increases that will happen at Port Covington. Back in the '90s, the ACLU filed a lawsuit against the state, and the ultimate goal was to acquire adequate funding to all of Baltimore's students and schools as guaranteed by the state constitution so that students could have the resources like art and music, excellent services for special education, pre-kindergarten and after-school programming. And this was a time when the ACLU and the city did great work together. We were strong and unified force for education. We won the lawsuit, and things were going well when the state began phasing in an additional 300 million to our schools. And our schools developed a citywide pre-K program, and schools had more resources in the classrooms, and we got better pay for our teachers. But when the recession hit, the state cut education funding, and that's when the Baltimore Education Coalition formed, along with some of our members here, Build and Strong City and the Roland Park Parent Group and Teacher Group. So we formed in 2009 in response to education cuts proposed by then-Governor Martin O'Malley and the legislature. We stayed together and grew our coalition by nearly two dozen organizations and successfully fought back over $150 million in cuts to our schools over the years. We saved hundreds of teaching jobs, paraprofessionals, and other staff and resources that support our children by bringing thousands of parents and students and advocates to Annapolis since 2009. Now we're confronted with a new crisis, and we're hoping that the city didn't forget or back out of its commitment to ensure adequate funding, constitutionally guaranteed adequate funding for our schools, and the city has a role in that. This crisis is about the city's growth and wealth, which has the effect of reducing state education funding like Kim just spoke about. The state funding formula is wealth equalized. We get almost 70% of our school funding from the state. But the formula also recognizes changes in district wealth. So if a district grows in wealth as measured by property values and income taxes, then state funding goes down, and that's what's happening in Baltimore. So city schools has lost about $18 million over the past two years due to the city's wealth gain. The funding formula assumes that if a district gets wealthier, it has more local dollars to put towards its own education system. However, the city has only filled in less than half of the gap in lost state funding due to wealth increases. So the city is falling behind and not fulfilling its share of funding to its own school system. We see in the MUNICAP analysis on the estimated loss to schools, and that's around $315 million over the 40-year term of the Port Covington TIF. We did our own estimate, and based on trends and data from the state, ours is a lot higher. It's over $1 billion, and we think that more time is needed to understand the impact to education. We have, the next speaker will talk about the numbers in the MUNICAP analysis. But no matter what the loss will be, City Council must act to ensure that city schools do not lose funding. We've heard that city officials are expecting a fix at the state level, but there's no guarantee at all that that will happen. And we're hearing that it won't be 100% fix at the state level, so they might take care of some of the loss, but right now, the solution that we hear that is being discussed isn't 100% fix, so schools will stand to lose money. So here are asks of City Council to ensure that city students do not lose in this deal. Before City Council votes, we ask that you seek a guarantee from state leaders, the governor, the Speaker, the Senate President, and both the executive and legislative branches, that the state education funding formula would be reformed to ensure that TIF and other city subsidized developments that trigger city wealth gains do not lead to reductions in state education funding for low-wealth jurisdictions like Baltimore City. And then work closely with Baltimore Education Coalition and other advocates, the mayor's office, and the state legislature to pass legislation when the time comes. We need 100% fix, not a partial fix, to the loss in education funding. We want to, we want City Council to add language to the bill or draft a MOU that mandates the city to refund city schools for any loss of state education funding due to property wealth gains within the Port Covington Development District until the state education funding formula is fixed to hold city schools harmless. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Gary Thirkelson. I am an education reform advocate with the ACLU of Maryland.
Bring that closer to you, please.
Tonight, I will be speaking on behalf of the ACLU's education reform project and the Baltimore Education Coalition. I want to talk more specifically about Port Covington's potential impact on state education aid. As most of you know, state education funding formula is a wealth-equalized formula, which means the state provides more funding to districts with lower wealth and less aid for those jurisdictions with higher amounts of wealth. As has already been mentioned at these hearings, without action taken on your part or a change in state law, Port Covington is estimated by the city's own experts, MUNICAP, to cost city schools an estimated $315 million in state education aid over the life of the project. To state the obvious, this will have a sizable, and from our standpoint, unacceptable, impact on city schoolchildren. Proponents of the current proposal will say that city schools won't really lose this money. They will point to the MUNICAP report showing that in most years, the city will bring in more than enough revenue to cover expenses for additional city services and the loss of state aid to city schools. Proponents will also say that this analysis is moot because the state legislature is going to fix it. They're going to exempt the wealth generated from projects like Port Covington from counting against the city and state aid calculations. But I am here tonight to deal in reality, not the well-intentioned assurances of the proponents of this TIF project. The reality is the project, as it's currently proposed, fails to guarantee city students will be kept from harm. The reality is there is no guarantee for a fix at the state level, and with divided government in Annapolis for the foreseeable future, one cannot assume that it will all work out. The reality is that even if revenues do meet projections and each successive mayor over the next four decades has enough money in the general fund to cover the loss of state aid to city schools each year, does one honestly believe every dollar will be replaced? That the city's historically burdened budget, which constantly faces the pressure of spending demands that far exceed revenues, will be able to continually prioritize making city schoolchildren whole? And it's important to remember that we're not talking about new money here. Even if the city replaces every lost state dollar, it will only keep city students at the funding level they're currently at. And I'm sure I don't need to remind you that city schoolchildren are currently $2,000 below the per pupil funding level the state has deemed students need to receive an adequate education. And my time's running out, so I'll just point out that we are calling for, my colleague Frank had outlined for you, and if you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate you hitting the time also. Thank you all. You're representing the BEC or...
Yes, sir.
Yes. Are there any questions or comments for my colleagues? There being none, thank you again. Thank you. And we're going to go on, and there are a number of people signed up. I'm just going to ask, in fairness, that we try not to be redundant in the numbers moving on. I guess that's the comment for the, after the first 20, we ask that you make your point. Thanks so much. Who's before me? Mike?
Mike Henderson.
Right.
So I'm going to try and do something a little bit scary here. We're going to try, we have a very quick audiovisual presentation that we should be good to go, as long as you put the mic behind. Please don't start counting me yet because this shouldn't count.
I made some bad decisions at a young age, but you know, Jump Start's been a voice for me, and it's been a voice for brothers like me.
Jump Start is a pre-apprenticeship program, and it's designed to get people to understand what they have to do to get and keep a job in the construction industry.
There's a story here in my hometown you won't hear on the national news. Why? Because this story doesn't feature riots, or natural disasters, or burning buildings. These are stories about hundreds of people who hit rock bottom and then turned their lives around by learning a skilled trade. These are stories with happy endings, even though their beginnings were anything but.
Some of the background stories are heartbreaking.
I grew up in the streets of Baltimore. I liked to fight growing up. At 32, I was in the grips of a crack and heroin addiction.
I did eight years and 10 months homeless when I found out about the program.
So you were in the market for a future at that point.
They basically sold me a dream, and I bought it. You know, they told me that if I committed to this program, that my past didn't have to dictate my future. I walked into a career center, and I was looking for a job, and a gentleman told me about Jump Start, and they paid $50 a week. At the time, that meant a dozen eggs, peanut butter and jelly, and a loaf of bread, and that's all it took to get me in the door.
What was the training like, and what did you focus on?
The training was an intense training. It taught you all aspects of construction, plumbing, carpentry. It taught you different tools, and then it gave you the opportunity to prefer what trade that you wanted to go in, which one were you more comfortable with.
And this Jump Start is all about having a jump start into the construction industry. Any knucklehead coming out the street don't really know how to use power tools, let alone hand tools. I had to start at basic tools. Like, I couldn't even name basic tools. So for me, it was, I'm trying to keep up with all the other guys, so I need to work double time. Also, what we're teaching guys are the intangibles, that you can't learn out of the textbook. How important being on time, being accountable.
They teach you about how to be on a job site. Ain't no excuse at a sense, nothing. You're not getting paid if you come in and leave.
We've set those demands up in ways that are easily understandable. They get a $25 stipend, but if they're late, they lose the stipend because that's going to happen on the job.
Because the whole thing is not being driven by bloody do-gooderism.
No, which is disgusting. Yes.
Right? I mean, it's...
Get it away from me.
You have builders who need skilled workers.
And if we don't give them a product that they can depend on, they're not coming back.
It's hard to find good work, people that are really just dedicated to come.
Is it a skill gap or a will gap?
I think it's a will gap. Like I said, skills can be taught. You can't teach will. In the way we look at Jump Start, they're hard, dedicated workers, and most of them turned out to be really successful, like Tate.
Kate actually goes out on a limb and says, "I promise you, if you hire this guy, you won't regret it." That means a lot, you know, having somebody believe in you like that. And coming from where I came from, I knew there was no reason for an employer to hire me. So there was a level of gratitude there when you gave me a job that I wasn't going to allow you to regret it.
How long did it take from the time you were finished the program to your first day on the job?
Within a week.
The sense of accomplishment that I feel is something that I had never experienced before.
In the past, I didn't even see past my next day, and now I can actually have plans for the future, plans for my son's future.
All right, so it's five years from now. Where are you?
I'm in South Carolina, my own house I built from the ground up, me, my wife, my kids, my own company.
Damn, I believe you. So you're not afraid to work?
Oh, absolutely not. That's crazy. Hey, listen, a man afraid to work is a man afraid to live.
That's good. Over the last 10 years, 700 people have graduated from Project Jump Start. 80% are still working in the skilled trades today. That is an incredible statistic, but I can tell you, it's a fact. I met a few...
Thank you for indulging me, but I thought it was important that you see Project Jump Start, which is considered to be one of the most, if not the most, successful pre-apprenticeship program in the city and in the state. We have Jump Start classes because we have jobs available, and this, to me, this is all about jobs. Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Mike Henderson. I'm the President of Associated Builders and Contractors. We represent 625 construction firms in the greater Baltimore metro area, 120 of which are right here in the city. We represent the Marriott Shop. This is a tenant that says work should be awarded to the most qualified firm for the best price, regardless of labor affiliation. Our membership is comprised mostly of non-union firms, but we have union members as well. The truth is that nearly nine out of every 10 construction workers in Maryland have chosen not to join a union. ABC is Maryland's largest provider of construction training. Each year, we train nearly 2,000 individuals in everything from pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship to job site safety and project management. We're pleased to lend our voice of support to the Port Covington project. Port Covington represents a once-in-a-generation opportunity to transform not only Baltimore's skyline, but the lives and hopes and fortunes of so many of our residents. We stand at a pivotal juncture in the city's history. How we accept this challenge will help define the next several decades. We were all witness to the anger and the sense of hopelessness that was on full display for all America to see last year. The systemic problems responsible for limiting opportunities for so many of our city residents obviously predate the events of 2015. We can debate endlessly about how to best fix things, but at the end of the day, there's no greater game changer in a person's life than a good-paying job with the opportunity to grow and to prosper. And the best way to create job opportunities is to create economic conditions that foster and encourage sustained private investment. We have real-world evidence of hundreds of our disaffected residents in the city, many of whom are ex-offenders, unemployed or underemployed, whose lives have been completely transformed by economic opportunity. Through Project Jump Start, we operate, which is considered one of the most successful workforce development programs in Maryland. You saw the video, and I don't need to go into these details. We partner with Job Opportunities Task Force. I'm joined with their Executive Director, Elizabeth Sacks, other community-based organizations, including the Center for Urban Families. Additionally, more than 100 of our graduates have gone on to enroll to accredited apprenticeship programs, and just two weeks ago, I got news that 100% of a class that just graduated has already been placed. This is a first, but it speaks to the credibility our program has with employers and the community. But not just the community and employers, but also by many of the city's leading private and public institutions, not the least of which is Sagamore Development. Sagamore has pledged and is demonstrating an absolute commitment to developing Baltimore City's workforce. Port Covington brings with it an unprecedented economic confusion that we believe will have a direct and powerful impact on reversing decades of diminished opportunity for so many of our residents. Rather than looking at the TIF as a short-term loss of property tax revenues, let's embrace the long-term investment in the infrastructure of Baltimore that will endure for generations to come. And at minute 35, I'm sorry, Elizabeth.
Hi, thank you very much. I'm Elizabeth Sacks. I'm the Executive Director of the Job Opportunities Task Force. We are a policy advocacy and service provider that works on behalf of low-income, low-skill individuals. We are the program side of Project Jump Start. We work with ABC, but we work with community-based organizations as well to identify those that would benefit from the training program that you saw here. And I think in all the talk about job creation and how many jobs, as you can see, it really takes an investment in people, investing in how much they need to get into training, get through the training, and then be successful in their jobs. So that's the role we play. That's the role we play with Project Jump Start, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Thank you.
Thank you both. All right. Frank Boston, followed by Wayne Frazier. And, Mr. Boston, it's your choice. You can either use the podium, or if you prefer to come to the table, you can.
I'll stand.
Okay. And you pretty much have to take the microphone in hand and put it close to your mouth.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Committee.
I'm going to, I'm going to, go ahead.
You go ahead.
I know you'll have someone with you.
Yeah, and I'll introduce.
So you're both going to do about two minutes, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Committee, I'm Frank Boston III, and I'm the legislative
I appreciate this committee, the mayor, the city council, the administration, and all of the hard work that's gone into this. This just didn't happen a week or two ago. We've been at this for over a year. Thank you for all of your hard work. And we, the Sagamore team, look forward to getting this bill done in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boston.
I have with me Mr. Ron DeJulius.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, Chairman, members of the council. My name is Ron DeJulius, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I was formerly the business manager of the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 37, as well as the president of Baltimore Building and Construction Trades, and more recently, the commissioner of Labor and Industry in the O'Malley Administration. I was recently hired as a consultant by Sagamore Development Corporation to help with some of the labor issues on this project. As I joined the team, I learned that they have a commitment to working with labor, the city of Baltimore, community groups, and all those involved in the progress of this project in the city itself. We had a number of discussions since I've been on board. But we started off, I looked at the situation as it was and the... Basically, we were at a standstill when it came to some of the labor issues. Since then, we have made movement in a positive direction, have developed multiple letters of understanding on the infrastructure contracts that place many people to work, and we're hopefully to get some of those done. I believe this is a very good, positive first step and a sign of good faith by Sagamore to begin this project. I've had numerous conversations with labor groups on this concept, as recently as today. Matter of fact, I spoke to people from Aluna and others to keep them abreast of the progress that we're making so far and to keep the doors open. As a matter of fact, today, the Operating Engineers Local 37, the Arm Workers Local 16, have signed a letter of understanding. I've also initiated some conversations. I've also initiated some conversations with the ABC minority...
Continue, Mr. Julius.
Minority contractors.
Okay, there is one cheer, just one cheer. Be respectful. Mr. Julius, you can wrap up, please.
Yeah, I'm going to wrap it up real quick. I believe that this project, there's enough work for everyone with little innovation and cooperation. I think we can find a way to bring all the parties in and work in a very positive and progressive manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frazier, I understand that you have a panel. And again, you can either stand at the podium or come to the table, your choice. But together, you have 10 minutes.
Oh my gosh, you gave the other guys last week much more time. But good afternoon.
Use the mic, please, Mr. Frazier.
Good afternoon, my name is Wayne Frazier. And I'm president of the Maryland Washington Minority Companies Association. We're located in Baltimore City on Palhatton Avenue. And I am a certified minority-owned business with six employees. My company, MWMCA, has been in existence since 2003. And we're here to advocate for women and minority business inclusion, whether it's government or private. And I'm going to stop there. I have my panel with me, which consists of all certified women and minority businesses. And then I'll wrap up. First person?
Good afternoon, Councilman Carl Stokes, all other distinguished. Thank you for your commitment to the First Amendment. My name is Cara DePietro. I'm CEO of HMC Incorporated, an architectural millwork and design company. We manufacture our millwork here in Maryland. My company is MDOT certified and Baltimore City certified. We require specialty workers in order to complete our projects properly. I feel that if the PLA were involved, that the quality of my project and my product would be jeopardized. In 2013, the median weekly earnings of a full-time union worker aged 25 years and older was 21% higher than that of the non-union workers. Across various ages and ethnic groups, this wage ranged from as low as negative 5% for white men aged 65 and older, and as high as 57% for Hispanic women aged 16 and older. These figures don't account for fringe benefits or the cost of the union dues. In 2010, employees spent an average, employers spent an average of $14.49 on benefits for every hour worked by union employees versus $7.43 for benefits for non-union employees. Unions generally have been able to raise union workers' compensation above market rates because exclusive representation laws give unions legal monopolies over employer labor supplies. The trade-off for union workers is that this can cause their employers to become less competitive, which decreases the number of union jobs, pulling people from other places in Baltimore City. This PLA would not only affect me as a subcontractor, but it would affect me as a contractor hiring second and third-tier minority women-owned businesses. I'm not sure why, you know, the ABC Boot Camp and Project SERVE, and we have all of these things in the city for ex-offenders and to train people who need training for jobs. It's my belief that we should use those programs that are rooted here. Union diversity participation, I'd like to know more about. Are there diversity goals? Are there programs in place? What's the ratio, black to white, women to men? How many are local? How many unions are certified by AWI to install architectural millwork? As a business owner, I deserve the right to negotiate with owners myself. I believe Port Covington could be the best thing to happen to Baltimore cities since 1850, when Johns Hopkins and the Knott Pratt Free Library established Midtown. And has the ability and responsibility to design a destination that is acceptable and accessible to all.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jim Davenport. I'm a member of the President's Roundtable, an organization of 20 businesses that are located in Baltimore. I myself have been a businessperson in this city for four years, 40 years. First with Baltimore Electronics, and then with American Technology. We certainly support the TIF. I do have a concern about the PLA agreement, however, okay? I have that concern because I don't believe we have that many black-owned businesses, which generally hire people that look like us as a part of the union. So therefore, I can see or foresee that the amount of workers that will be brought on, okay, that are residents of the city, not individuals that are brought in from outside the city, but are residents of the city, will continue to look like what I see when I drive around and I see the construction projects that are going on. So we are definitely for the President's Roundtable. We are for the TIF agreements. But I ask you pleased to examine the impact and the outcomes of this particular agreement. Thank you very much.
Hello, committee. My name is Otis Warren III. I'm a Baltimore City resident and president of Otis Warren and Company, a third-generation business. We're a certified minority MBE company in the city that provides real estate management, brokerage, and development services. I am testifying to support the passing of Sagamore Development's TIF with the understanding that there will be transparent partnerships with minority-owned businesses during and after the development of Port Covington. This TIF will then be a great benefit for Baltimore, the Port Covington area, and participating minority-owned businesses. Additionally, I oppose the union's attempt to tag this Port Covington project under a project labor agreement. This labor agreement will hurt the competitive advantage and the control of hiring for local businesses. As a co-developer or management company for the future Port Covington, we will have to deal with paying much higher wages, possible strikes, and decreased human resource control are a few of the unnecessary things a local qualified business should not have to deal with. Thank you.
My name is Joshua Matthews, president and CEO of JCM Control Systems. Mr. Chairman, President, young committee, it is my pleasure and privilege to be here before you this morning as a Baltimore resident. Born and bred here in Baltimore, educated in Baltimore City school systems. My dad worked at Champion Brickyard Eighth Grade Education. Mom had 10 kids, and she was a stay-home mom. During that time, of course, our effort was to get a job, education, and make a good name for yourself. It wasn't about going to college, it was about taking care of the home and taking care of the family. During that time in my tenure, I started my business and, no, I got a job, first of all, in 1970, in the mechanical automation and service industry. Stayed in that field for about 10 years, left there, started my own business because I got laid off. As you know, in a lot of cases, we're the last one hired, the first one get laid off. Bottom line is, in 34 years I've been in business, five of my employees at this point now own their own business. Why? Because they seen what I do, and they figured they could do it with an education. They're doing extremely well. One of the things, I'm here to support the TIF program, but more than anything, I want you to really consider what the mayor's already started by having an entrepreneur workshop. I have given a young man a $300,000 contract, his first contract, and I'm mentoring him. The bottom line, he was selling drugs, he got four kids, and now he's understanding what it means to be a father and a man at home. This is what you need in Baltimore. Any general contractor, any general contractor can change the development growth and community if they want to. Over the last six months, we've lost $10 million worth of work because I wasn't a union employee. I used to be in the union, but because I didn't have a hammer to correct issues and they wasn't correcting them for me, I decided to get out. And it cost me a half a million dollars to do it. Project labor agreement is fine for those that want a job, but what about those that want an entrepreneur and leave a legacy to their family? They need to start their own business because we have been the backbone of any country because we've been in the trenches and making it work. I say to you today, we need to focus on what we can do to touch these families that don't have a father and mother at home, that don't know what it means to see a bright future, figure they can't live no more than 26 years and want to think they're going to die at 26 years old. You need the people that live in the community that can go in the community and demonstrate it's okay to drive a BMW and have a nice home. I appreciate your time.
Mr. Frazier, you're out of time for your panel.
So can they come up separately?
Sir, you can, and... Yeah, they can speak individually. If they've signed in, I'll call their name individually. They will get the two minutes.
But you gave the unions 20 minutes, and you gave Build and all those others more time last week.
Mr. Frazier, if you want to fight, we can fight outside. But this is the end of that. You have closing comments, don't you, sir? Do you like to take those?
My closing comments are simply this. The building trades have not been kind to women and black-owned minority businesses. Just haven't. They've had 80 years to correct it. They have it. A PLA would spell doom, doom, to these businesses. And it'll be on your shoulders if it happened. We support the TIF, but we say no to PLA.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Frazier. The next three speakers, please, are Stephen Morris, John Barber, and Paul Isom. And you have two minutes each, please. Stephen here?
I wasn't sure we had a panel here. I thought we were speaking individually.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is John Barber. I'm the president of the Carpenters Union in Baltimore, and I am with Build Up Baltimore. Build Up Baltimore is a coalition of hard-working men and women who believe we can no longer have business as usual in our city. I am here today to ask the city council to take a good look at this Port Covington development, in particular, the impact such a large tax subsidy will have on our city and communities. If Sagamore is hoping to bring about real transformation in Baltimore, we must hold them to the kind of standards that warrant a half a billion in public subsidies. Baltimore residents need access to the opportunities that built our middle class generations ago. This includes good jobs with families sustaining wages and benefits, real affordable housing, accessible transportation, and ample funding for our schools. We cannot afford another massive development project that benefits wealthy developers while leaving the rest of us behind. When I take a look at this TIF legislation and the concerns of the city residents, I can't help but thinking, this really isn't a difficult problem to solve. However, instead of real commitments and guarantees Sagamore has presented us with pretty pictures and fancy TV ads full of empty promises. Yet, we need in Baltimore is concrete and enforceable changes. The answer to this problem is simple. A community benefits agreement that recognizes that in order for Port Covington to transform Baltimore, it must really address the issues that have impacted our city for decades. My union, the Carpenters, have been in Baltimore for generations and have seen firsthand the impact of bad policy on our members and their families. However, we continue to work to create and support a pathway for local residents into the middle-class careers. But no matter what we do, if developers like Sagamore do not commit to real change, our work is done in vain. Together with Build, Build Up Baltimore asks that the city council pass an amendment that will mandate that all Baltimoreans get a return on our investment. This includes mandating that 51% of the hours worked are by Baltimore residents.
I need you to wrap up.
We want to see MBEs get a fair shot at competing.
Mr. Barber, I need you to wrap up, please.
Okay. We need to mandate that we have real affordable housing in Port Covington, accessible transportation. We need a profit-sharing agreement that treats the city like investors are. Furthermore, to ensure this is the best deal for Baltimore, we must mandate and implement comprehensive analysis on this TIF.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Paul Isom. I'm a construction worker. Born in Baltimore, raised in Baltimore. I helped build Baltimore. The subway, the aquarium, a lot of downtown, the light rail. All of these projects were done with organized labor. I was proud to be a member of that. One of the advantages of organized labor is better living conditions. I've heard Mr. Entrepreneur over here, he said for his company to benefit, he would have to pay higher wages. Well, what's wrong with that? What's wrong with paying higher wages? This job is going to be... It's going to be a prevailing wage job anyway, I've heard. I've heard the word prevailing wage last week, they spoke of that. It's going to be a prevailing wage job anyway. So they're going to have to pay those wages to be competitive. What's wrong with having a PLA with, I mean, yeah, project labor agreement with organized labor? They don't want to be, they don't want the workers to be represented. See, if you're not representing the workers, then each worker is all alone and by himself. It's a rat race, and it would be, it's like a race to the bottom. But with representation, you're safer in your job. You're more secure with your health benefits and whatnot. Mr. DeJulius was talking about... Mr. DeJulius was talking about giving the TIF money to Sagamore, just, you know, he's all for it. Hey, let's give Sagamore this TIF money. I'm for that too, but not if they're not gonna have any kind of agreement with organized labor. I mean, organized labor is the backbone of this city. I mentioned a few of the projects I've done, but one of the non-union projects I worked on was City Hospital, and there were people that died there. We have training also. We have training, we have certifications, we have an apprenticeship. The project Jump Start, it's a wonderful thing, but they send each one of their members out into the construction industry. You're on your own, you're by yourself, and it's not fair sometimes. But with organized labor, you have representation, you have what you need to work confidently and a way to utilize your skills. My time is up. I'm for this, I'm for this TIF going to Sagamore, but not if they can't represent and come to an agreement with organized labor, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers individually, two minutes each, is Will Engelhardt, Ryan Barth, John Ripley, Jacqueline Adamson. Okay, go ahead, sir. Bring forth.
Good evening, my name is John Ripley. I'm the President for the Baltimore County Federation of Public Employees, the sister union of the City Union of Baltimore. I represent 1,500 county employees in Baltimore County, as well as I'm on the Executive Board for AFL-CIO Metropolitan Council and AFT Maryland, and I'm here in support of labor and communities in Baltimore City. The city is hurting, communities are struggling, labor is struggling, and we can do better. Let's build it, let's build it together is a good motto, but it's incomplete. It's only good if we build it together, if we build it with more project labor agreements, if we build it with more community benefit agreements, and we keep more of the money in Baltimore, in Maryland, instead of going out of state. I'm not here opposed to Honor Marmer, I'm not here opposed to Mr. Plank, or, I think in principle, we're not generally opposed to Port Covington. We're opposed to not doing it better for Baltimore.
Thank you. Before you leave, sir, so I heard a panel before you who said that the project labor agreement is discriminatory, not their words, toward minorities and women. Do you want to speak to that?
Of course, I would totally disagree. That's just nonsensical.
Can you give, that's very descriptive, but could you be more specific?
Baltimore and most of Maryland operate under Memorandum of Understanding and project labor agreements, and there's no reason why Port Covington can't do better with agreements coming forward. It is absolutely unfair. Baltimore's not being unreasonable here to reach better project labor agreements, or more. We heard some testimony here that some agreements have been reached, but it's simply unacceptable, it's unacceptable to have more of the proceeds not staying in Baltimore, not staying in Maryland, and not helping the community where this project's being built. It's unacceptable.
Okay, let me ask you, let me ask you. Let me ask you, because it would give us some consternation if we thought that something was happening that was, as spoken. What is a project labor agreement? Tell, give me, just tell us that, for our edification of the public as well as the members.
A project labor agreement is agreement on the manner in which work will be conducted, prevailing wages and such, where the workers are coming from. We want, obviously, Baltimore to do the work. Do, that's not unreasonable. That's not unreasonable with a community that is hurting.
Thank you. Any colleagues? Thank you. Ryan Barth, who is his name? Okay, Ryan Barth. John Ripley. Oh, that was John. Hey, John. Jacqueline Adamson. Travis Robertson. Maybe we'll go home by eight. John Comer. Maria Brown. Good evening. Are you bringing a panel?
Yes, we're, I'm in for John Comer, who's out of town today, and Maria Brown, and Roxanne German, as well as Monisha Shariel.
Okay, you got ten minutes.
Okay, all right. My name is Jane Henderson. I am the Co-Executive Director of Communities United. We are a grassroots membership organization that is working on many issues of justice and community concerns throughout the city of Baltimore. Our members are some of the most low income residents in the city. Many are ex-offenders, many live and reside in public housing. And we're here today to share our profound concerns about the current proposal for the TIF for Port Covington. This is a huge, indeed historic, investment of, let's be clear, tax dollars, and as it's currently constituted, it can't be justified, in our view, because it does not benefit all of Baltimore. Our members, two of whom you'll hear from after me, struggle daily with substandard, even horrid, conditions in both public and private rental housing, and they're often looking for work with, that pays a living wage. Port Covington offers little help for Baltimoreans like our members. There's no promise in this agreement of good paying jobs, and by good paying, I mean fifteen dollars an hour or more, but you won't deal with that till Monday. There's no plan for how residents reliant on public transportation, well, particularly folks coming from East and West Baltimore where jobs are desperately needed, there's no plan for how those folks will get to those jobs, even if there potentially are some good paying jobs in the mix as a result of this development. There's no requirement for affordable housing in this development. This proposal from Sagamore basically proposes about 14,000 residential units with an average of $2,300 a month rent for only 900 square feet. Most of the units are gonna be one bedroom as well, or smaller, which certainly is not gonna house the families who, again, many of whom are desperate looking for decent housing. Only households close to $100,000 a year can afford such rent. And in Baltimore, you can bet that that, those are, we know, those are, those families making that are much more likely to be white. Consider that if one quarter of Baltimore's population lives in poverty, meaning a family of four living just under $25,000 a year. We believe Sagamore's proposal will create a white, wealthy enclave that leaves most in Baltimore out. This is not only unconscionable, as it's currently constituted, but it likely violates the law, but I'll leave that to Monisha to talk more about. And without further ado, I'll let you hear from a couple of.
Good evening. My name is Maria Brown. I have lived in Baltimore City all my life. The place I reside, my palace is located in Perkins Homes, a part of Housing Authority, one of Housing Authority of Baltimore City. I'm on a fixed income at this moment due to physical health injuries. My neighborhood has a lot of crime and poor unemployment rate because of lack of jobs. I would love to live in a city of a more radical and socially, economically integrated neighborhood, but I can't afford to do so. We need to make housing affordable to everyone, regardless of your color, your creed, or your income status. This country is too rich to have any homelessness or joblessness. If you give these, these developers money to build this, it will not benefit all. If you say, "Let's build together," then let's build together and leave no one behind. Why have, why haven't these abandoned buildings in Baltimore City been rebuilt? And yet, you want to make a Port Covington? We need to invest this money into education for our children and our grandchildren and our grandchildren.
Ms. Brown, please.
Yes, okay. We elect you as our officials, and we expect to make, and we expect you to make the best decision to benefit all of the residents of Baltimore City. Yes, I have lived, okay. I heard when the horseshoe was made, that y'all said this money was gonna be put back into the schools, and it happened. You're closing more schools. I have lived in Baltimore City all my life, and it's about time for change, for all, justice for all, unity for all. Let's make the right decision that we will all benefit from, not the rich get richer and the poor get poor. It's time for change, Baltimore City. It's time for all of us to stand up and be united with one another. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good afternoon, city council. My name is Roxanne German, and I'm a resident of Perkins Homes also. You know, I am a woman, a single mother on disability, and I would just like to see that when Port Covington is built, that we are allowed and can afford some living arrangements as far as being a part of Port Covington. I live in a poor neighborhood, which is full of crime, and I just would like to see a change for a lifetime. You know, I'm just tired of living in poor conditions, and, you know, I believe that, you know, when they build Port Covington, that, you know, allow some low income people to move in there, please. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Monisha Shariel. I'm an attorney with the Public Justice Center, and I'm here in partnership with fellow lawyers at the ACLU of Maryland and the NAACP Legal Defense and Education Fund, a national organization headed by Baltimore's own Sherilyn Eiffel, representing our client, Communities United. As you've heard, Communities United members and many other groups and your constituents are concerned that this publicly bankrolled development will exclude much of Baltimore's population. I'd like to elaborate on three specific ways that the project will, could deepen racial and socio-economic segregation that have ravaged the city if significant changes are not made. First, Sagamore's plans call for the construction of 14,000 residences leasing on average at $2,340 a month for a 900 square foot unit. That's more than twice the fair market rent for the area and affordable only to households making around $100,000 or more. About 30% of Baltimore's white families fall within that income bracket as compared to only 8% of our city's black families, meaning that white households are almost four times as likely to be able to take advantage of the housing opportunities planned for the development. Second, the city's MOU does not require any subsidized housing at the development. The version of the MOU that I've seen identifies an unenforceable goal of making 10% of units affordable to families at 80% of area median income, which is around $69,000, much higher than the income of many people in our city. And that goal is meaningless insofar as it allows Sagamore to pursue the considerably less expensive alternative of paying $3,000 to $5,000 per unit in lieu of creating any affordable housing on site. And what's more, there's no provision at all for housing that would be affordable to anyone making less than that $69,000 threshold. Again, there's disproportionate racial impact here, given that Baltimore's black families are three times more likely to live in poverty than its white families. Third, transportation plans for the project are car centric, focused on investments to improve I-95. As you've heard, African American residents of the city are three times more likely than white residents to rely on public transit, so that deepens our concerns about segregation. The PJC, ACLU, and NAACP LDF wish to make you aware that enactment of the TIF as proposed may violate the law. As a recipient of federal housing and transportation dollars, Baltimore has a duty to affirmatively advance the creation of integrated communities. The Port Covington development currently does the opposite, such that a decision by the council to divert an unprecedented amount of tax revenues to the project could run afoul of that required.
Okay, I need you to wrap up, please. I'm sorry, I didn't notice.
Yes, I'll just close by saying we detailed our legal concerns more extensively in the written testimony, which you should have, and we remain eager to work with the council, with Sagamore, and to many groups who are here today to make it a better project for all of Baltimore. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Trina Ashley and Taisha Harrell, separately, individually. Oh, you were part of that?
Yes.
Sorry, thank you.
I thought I was reading off of yours. Which one was Trina?
Who's Trina? She spoke?
I guess she's not here. Oh, she wasn't here.
I got you. All right, I think we completed that page. Thank you. I have next, Sidney Bond, these are all individuals, Barbara Mosier.
Yep, Barbara.
Sidney Bond is here.
Barbara Mosier.
Barbara's not. And the next one is Betsy Bortkin, Laurent Manod, I pronounced that poorly, Alan Schutler, Jen Diamond, Robin Dorsey.
I'd like to thank the committee for letting us give our testimony this evening. My name is Alan Schutler. I am a representative with Carpenters Local 177 here in Baltimore. We have over 200 members who reside in Baltimore alone. Our members attend a four-year apprenticeship program at no charge, and our graduation rate is near perfect. We feel that Port Covington can further benefit from our professional experienced carpenters, and in turn provide a great opportunity by letting us recruit even more residents from Baltimore City to become carpenters. Baltimore has an increased problem with contractors taking advantage of workers by paying them in cash, not taking legal deductions, and treating them as independent contractors. Not only is this unacceptable, it is illegal, and Sagamore needs to partner with, together with the unions to ensure that this does not occur on the Port Covington project. The carpenters have partnered with the Living Classrooms Foundation, and Jane Adams Resource Centers are great opportunities for Baltimore City residents, and in doing so, giving back to the community to ensure Baltimore City residents have avenues to succeed in life. The carpenters support the Port Covington project and TIF as long as an agreement with Sagamore can be accomplished that benefits the whole city, which we currently do not have. We have carpenters working at that distillery project and see plenty of opportunity for city residents to have the same benefits as them. With all the upcoming work at Port Covington, we can recruit a whole lot more. With all the upcoming work at Port Covington, we can recruit a whole lot more city residents into our organization, which in turn will provide middle-class wages, benefits, and a safe work environment. Please consider supporting the TIF if Sagamore can come to a better agreement with the unions and community. We need a new way of doing business in Baltimore. I am asking the City Council to say enough is enough, on caring to developers and paying heed to their not-so-veg threats to leave if they don't get public money handed to them on a silver platter. A new way of doing business for a new Baltimore.
Need you to wrap up, sir.
Council members, I ask that you stand up with your city and hold Sagamore to their stated goal of transforming Baltimore. We all want the better Baltimore and together we can make sure that we stand united and do this project right. Thank you.
We've been joined by our colleague, Councilman Warren Branch of the 13th District, a member of the committee. Sure, thank you, Councilman. I'm repeating, Jen Diamond, Robin Dorsey, Brian Murray, Betty Robinson.
My name is Betty Robinson, by the way. Good evening, council members and Baltimore City residents. My name is Betty Robinson and this testimony is from the Baltimore chapter of a national organization called Showing Up for Racial Justice. Our main goal is to organize white people to show up to challenge white supremacy and support racially equitable policies and practices. As members of the People Organized for Responsible TIFs Tax Breaks and Transportation Transformation Coalition, we believe that the Port Covington master plan and this TIF request currently continues many of the racially inequitable practices of the past. For example, we do not support a tax subsidy when it spends three times more than our total Rec and Parks budget for new waterfront parks, especially when we are closing recreation centers in inner-city neighborhoods. Nor do we support building a 14,000-one-bedroom and studio apartments for people making over $100,000 per year when 57% of our city residents are housing insecure. When people say that one photo changed the civil rights movement, they are talking about the one of Emmett Till after he was brutally murdered in Mississippi and his mother decided to have an open coffin. What about the last photo we saw of Freddie Gray alive when he was being put into the paddy wagon last April? Or the national press coverage of our devastated and disinvested black neighborhoods? These photos brought thousands to the point of saying, "No more." And tragically, Freddie Gray's neighborhood looks the same today as it did last April when the uprising happened. So we challenge our city officials not to support government investments of over $1 billion without the housing and job guarantees that we think are necessary for black neighborhoods to thrive and for the 63% of black people in the city to have an opportunity for a And I just want to say that we do support the build and the buildup Baltimore demands of local hiring, profit sharing, reimbursing the city for education funding, and making sure that we have 20% affordable housing. And I'll give you my testimony, it's got more stuff.
Ms. Robinson, Councilmember Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ma'am.
I better keep it. Okay, yes.
With all due respect, you realize that we're not closing rec centers in Baltimore City, right?
Well, there have been rec centers closed. There's one in West Baltimore, right in Harlem Park, that was closed several years ago. There are several others. I mean, the residents who live in those neighborhoods, well, I visited actually the Harlem Park one. I know it was closed. I went there when the residents were fighting to keep it open.
What year was that rec center closed, ma'am?
That was two years ago.
I'm...
And there are more, there are more examples.
The city, the city is, it's just...
Well, factually inaccurate to paint the picture that the city is in the process of closing rec centers. It's not. The city is trying to...
I think, I think, there's a historian that works...
Hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it.
No, I just...
Hold it, hold it, hold it.
Okay.
Thank you. No back and forth as much as possible.
No, I just wanted to say there's a...
And, 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 one, there are two mics, but only one person should speak at a time, please.
Okay, that's fine.
Councilmember.
It's, it's just factually inaccurate to say that the city is in the process of closing rec centers when that is, when that is just not the case. It's not true.
What I was going to say is there's a historian at the Department of Rec and Parks who has a record of all the rec centers that are open and closed, and you could find out from him what the situation is.
Thank you. Councilmember, you, okay. Councilman Henry.
Yeah, I actually just wanted to share with my colleague, but I think Betty did an okay job of saying that when, when we talk about Baltimore closing rec centers, that is a pattern over the last generation more than it is a, what is actually, what might actually be on the books right now for this particular, you know, budgetary year. And so I think that's a reasonable point to make in terms of the concerns that people have that he wants.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
I caught that. The graduate. Good evening, council members. My name is Brian Murray. I'm the pastor of New Covenant Community United Church of Christ, co-chair of Bridge Maryland, and a partner here with Build Up Baltimore, representing the faith community, organized labor, and Baltimoreans seeking a better life through decent working and living conditions. But most of all, I'm a resident of Baltimore City from the Audubon neighborhood not more than five minutes from here. I'm going to start by thanking Mr. Young for speaking with me on the phone the other day. I believe, I firmly believe you understand your role in the political process as well as your faith, and I believe they're based on a set of values. And I, as well as many of your ministers, pray that in your decisions in this important role you play in this city, that they are guided by those same values. To those of you on the council, I pray that your decisions are guided likewise. After the things I heard in this chamber last week, my prayers are accompanied by a question. Why not commit? Commit to what? Commit that in going forward, the conditions by which you approve this project are made from a place that is not listed in anything in the lobby directory in City Council, but it should be on every floor. Commit from a place called moral high ground. The first thing is, I want to congratulate you because it's come to my attention, and you said it, that you're willing to sit down at the table and negotiate. And all of the members of Build Up Baltimore, Bridge Maryland, Build, Organized Labor, all of the community associations are ready to sit at the table of moral high ground and negotiate. And I pray that over there, Mr. Mark Weller, that let's, let's do this together and sit at the table of moral high ground and simply negotiate something that Sagamore Development and the city can live with. It's not a hard thing to do. Let's build it together. I could go through all of the iterations we've talked about, making sure that there's a public vetting process. I can make sure that we go through protect public funding for the schools and 20%, 25% affordable housing and 51%...
Pastor, I got to ask you to wrap it up. I'm sorry, I have to ask you to wrap it up, please.
Okay, let me wrap it up like this. Every day, people come from both sides of I-95 into this city. And for three, four years, we've seen Manny Machado, and we've seen Ray Lewis, and we've seen Michael Phelps, and this is welcome to Baltimore and we must protect this house. We got an innovator in sportswear doing this project. My prayer is that he would become an innovator in urban development and throw out the old playbook of development that has gone on in this city. Which is more important, t-shirts and sneakers or being an innovator in urban development? Thank you, God bless you. Let's negotiate at the table, Mr. Weller.
Yeah, that's where I'm going. Yeah, it doesn't matter, we'll call this night anyway. All right, here we go. Bruce Holtman, these are individuals, two men its age. Bruce Holtman, David Young, Lloyd Bowser. Dr. Bowser's not here. Sharon Black. Reverend Calvin Kane. Reverend Kane, no. Frank Logan. David Allison. All right, the Munich Cap group would like to come before us. They did not speak last week. At this time, I'll ask Steve Kraus to come.
We got you last week. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Steve Kraus. I'm deputy finance director. In the interest of time, we'll get straight to the introduction and then have Mr. Rice discuss his response to the Tischler-Bryce report that quite frankly criticized his analysis. With me again is Mr. Keenan Rice, present CEO of Munich Cap, and to his right is Mr. Davis Akia, who is ex-Bryce president. Both of them were key participants in development of this analysis.
Keep going.
Good evening. My name is Keenan Rice. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'd like to begin by giving an introduction to Munich Cap. Munich Cap is a national leader in representing local governments with tax increment financing. We've provided advice on over 200 tax increment and similar projects throughout the country in over 30 states. We've assisted in funding almost $4 billion, almost $4 billion in public improvements. We've assisted the city of Baltimore for almost 20 years, representing it on every tax increment project done within the city. Also want to point out, we're a registered financial advisor with both the SEC and the MSRB, which is a requirement under the Dodd-Frank Act. Now, one of the things that means is we're also subject to the regulations of those two entities related to financial advisors, which are intended to protect the city and other local government clients. One of those regulations requires that when we provide you advice, we actually do the necessary research and analysis on which to base that advice. And I mentioned that because I just want to point out, and I think it's important for you to be aware, that Tischler-Bryce is not a financial advisor, and in fact, the analysis they provided was not backed up by research themselves into the city's budget or the plans that have been adopted, or even carefully reviewing the TIF application that you had received. And as you know, they actually didn't even call us to ask us on questions. I'm not sure about the standards that apply to them and their industry, but I can tell you about the standards that apply to us because it's actually a requirement of the regulations we operate under. If we needed to make a phone call so that we're adequately informed to provide advice to our client, we would be obligated to do that. It's a requirement, it's a responsibility that we owe to our clients. On this slide I've just listed, TIFs that we've worked on here in Maryland, you can see, we've worked with Anarundale County, Baltimore County, City of Annapolis, City of Baltimore, City of Frederick, City of Laurel, City of Salisbury, Harford County, Howard County, Prince George's County. We also represent Montgomery County. I'm going to go through a number of slides. I'm not asking anyone to read this. I just want to show you a number of national TIF projects we've worked on, and it is, there's a lot of, as you can see, projects we've worked on helping local governments throughout the country to fund projects through tax increment financing. So I think we have a very good understanding of the requirements and expectations as local governments evaluate, go through the process of evaluating tax increment financing. The fiscal impact analysis that we provided to you as part of the TIF application included 84 pages of heavily annotated schedules detailing methods, sources, and assumptions. There is an additional 270 pages of additional schedules providing analysis on property taxes, tax credits, and debt service. This was in, within a 545-page document providing additional background information. The means in which we provide this information provides a great deal of transparency to you, to the public, as well as to the city. Many of the questions Tischler-Bryce raised were actually answered in that information that was provided, but it was evident they didn't clearly, carefully read it. It's important to understand that we assist the city in a process to evaluate a TIF, and it's very important that the, the model we use is a dynamic model, which helps us evaluate assumptions and scenarios. We've prepared many scenarios as we've worked with the city on this. For example, as you know, we evaluated a scenario where there is a reduction in state aid for schools. We've looked at different values on properties, different amount of bonds that are issued, different interest rates on those bonds, different build-out periods, numerous other assumptions as we've worked through this process. And it's important that we have a model that allows us to do that, to be able to react timely and efficiently to provide information on these different assumptions. The information included in the TIF application actually included two scenarios. I can also tell you that the standard we see here at the city of Baltimore, as well as throughout the country, when local governments are evaluating a TIF, transparency of the information is important to them because they're making a financial commitment through a TIF. They want to see the analysis. They don't just want conclusions to us, even if we provide a written document that gives them some examples and explanation, they want to see the actual calculations. And that's what we actually provided to you. In fact, we provided the same information to you and to the public that we provided to staff, and we think that's important for you to see those same numbers and the transparency. Also want to point out that I don't, when, when Tischler-Bryce talks about what is the standard in the industry, I don't think they're really able to speak to the standard for evaluating TIFs because they don't actually do that kind of work. They are an experienced firm on doing fiscal impact analysis, but not in the process of evaluating TIFs, okay? And I say that for two reasons. One is, we've worked on almost every TIF in the state of Maryland, and they have not worked on any of those TIFs. Also, as I've pointed out, they're not a registered financial advisor and they simply are not able to provide advice to local governments because of that, which would be necessary, which is a part of the process of providing evaluation on tax increment financing. In the model that we provided, there's a great deal of conservatism. Now, there's no doubt, you can go through and you can question and say, "Well, maybe the cost should have been a little bit higher here or there." That's always going to be the case on any analysis prepared by someone, by anybody. Someone can raise questions about it. But we provided a great deal of conservatism on those revenues and expenses that are most significant and that are also most important to the analysis of a TIF. For example, on the debt service and the bonds, which is the single largest expense, it's $1.4 billion. We assumed an interest rate of 6% to 6.5%. Most of the city's TIF bonds are actually paying 4% and we would expect the bonds on Port Covington to pay between 4% and 5%. Had Tischler-Bryce called us, we would have pointed this out to them, let them know about this. For example, we assumed 33% of the employees in Port Covington would live in this city at the actual Under Armour headquarters. It's 44%. So we probably significantly underestimated income tax revenues to the city. We also used a conservative approach to estimating the value that will produce the real property taxes. We looked at two approaches. The State Department of Assessments and Taxation will use an income capitalization approach on apartments. We looked at that approach, but then we actually used a more conservative approach that was 30% lower. That impact alone represents $8.8 million a year that we did not include because of the more conservative approach. We assumed that the city would only receive 94% of real property taxes. Its actual collection rate is much higher than that. These conservative assumptions we made are far greater in impact than some of the minor things that Tischler-Bryce raised. And just to test that, we actually did two scenarios, okay? So we did another scenario where we assumed almost every budget line item in the city would be impacted by the development of Port Covington, and that resulted in a change in the fiscal impact from about $1.7 billion to $1.4 billion. So it's a very strong positive fiscal impact, even in that case. In fact, I would point out, it's significantly stronger than the estimated fiscal impact for National Harbor when Prince George's County approved the TIF for National Harbor. We also did an alternative analysis where we took a less conservative approach on things such as interest rates, property values, and... such as interest rates, property values, and income taxes, which are still reasonable assumptions. And that resulted in a positive fiscal impact of $2.8 million. Now, I'm not recommending a more aggressive assumption. We think it's appropriate to be conservative in this analysis. We were conservative on these assumptions on purpose, okay? I just want to point out that the conservativeness in our assumptions on the most significant line items had a far greater impact than some of the minor costs that, you know, someone might argue should have been higher. And I think had Tischler-Bice provided a balanced evaluation and response, they would have noted the conservativism on these very significant items. The fiscal impact analysis accounted for $1.4 billion of public improvements. There've been three master plans that have been prepared by Port Covington. There've been extensive planning, engineering, and traffic studies. Our role is not to tell the city what public impacts are going to be required. The city's already done planning. Many of these improvements have already been indicated. Our role is to go through and review the planning that has been done and, closer, okay, sorry. Our role is actually to review the planning efforts that have already been undertaken, because the city has a very extensive and professional process for evaluating development plans. And to identify from that process what are the public improvements likely to be required. And if there are questions, we do additional research on that. Again, I think this is something that Tischler-Bice is not familiar with, because they're not involved in the evaluation of TIFs, okay? The difference on doing a fiscal impact with a TIF is a TIF is an implementation tool. So we're only using TIF when the plans have already been improved for a development. The purpose of the TIF is to help make that development occur. So we're always working with the process where there've already been extensive analysis done. Okay, thank you. On the, I'm sorry. Okay. Again, had Tischler-Bice contacted, we would have pointed out a number of the improvements they questioned, we had already checked on, and there was adequate capacity for it. Also want to point out that 90% of the revenues we estimated were done on a marginal impact basis and 55% of the cost. In their memo, they said we use an average cost methodology. It's simply untrue. I mean, I was kind of shocked by that statement, because we have almost 300 pages of analysis on marginal impact. I just don't understand if they missed it, or they just misrepresented the facts. Just as one example of the marginal impact analysis that we applied on a very, on both a conservative approach on a significant cost, the property tax credits on this project are estimated at $760 million. It's a huge cost, much greater than most of the other line items that Tischler-Bice asked about. We prepared 150 pages of schedules to analyze the impact of these property tax credits. It's very complicated, but we did the very thorough analysis necessary to estimate these costs, okay? And we provide similar detail on real property taxes, debt service, public improvement costs, special taxes. A balanced review would have pointed out the very thorough analysis we did on these highly significant revenues and expenses. During the process to evaluate the TIF, as I've pointed out, we've already done numerous scenarios. We provided two scenarios in the TIF application. We're always available to do more scenarios when asked, whether by you or by someone else. We don't, of course, we can't just go do scenarios on our own, okay? Our contract with the city doesn't allow us to do that. We have to do work that we're requested. But we're always available to do it, and we've done many scenarios, and we're available to do more, okay? Also want to point out that the city has a very thorough TIF process with checks and rechecks. And among those checks, the Board of Finance has the responsibility to approve any issuance of TIF bonds. And they require a thorough due diligence that's done consistent with the security law disclosure requirements, okay? Which provides some great discipline to the due diligence that's done. The Board of Finance then requires us to update all the same information for anything that's changed. Their purpose is to make sure the city is still getting what it expected to get, okay? So if they find out at that point in time that there've been changes and the city's no longer getting what they're supposed to, then they don't go forward with the issuance of the bonds, okay? But what that allows us to do is scenarios based on real information as opposed to just speculation, like, you know, what will the impact of 3D printing have on manufacturing? Okay? As I've mentioned, tax increment financing is an implementation tool. The purpose is to implement goals of the city. Those goals are within the adopted plans for the development of the property. The improvements being provided by the TIF are those very improvements to ensure that those goals are met. And many of those include making parks available to the city and making those open to the public and including it as a recreational element. The use of tax increment financing to meet the goals of the city regarding that development is a conventional use and certainly a recommended best practice for tax increment financing. Special taxes are a very important tool for protecting the city with TIF. And many jurisdictions that create tax increment financing districts use special taxes. It's a way of creating a security interest in the developer's property to ensure their performance, that they deliver on their promises, particularly promises, to develop the property and produce special tax, to produce tax revenues to pay the development. Okay, when special taxes are collected on a TIF in Baltimore, it can be one of two reasons. One, it could be because development has not kept pace with the issuance of TIF bonds. It can also be because we're recapturing property taxes that the property receives, because as a result of those property taxes, there's not enough tax revenues to pay the debt service. So we make the developer pay special taxes to recover property tax credits. In this case, out of $291 million in projected special taxes, $276 million are to recover property taxes, okay? In those cases, the property taxes, even with the special taxes, lower than normal property taxes. So this in no way supports the Tischler-Bice claim that the property doesn't pencil out. They just didn't understand, okay, the special tax analysis. And I'd have to say, they didn't clearly read the application, because schedules detailing this difference were in the TIF application. Okay, in summary, I just want to point out that the TIF application, particularly the fiscal impact analysis, is detailed, it's transparent, it's extensively annotated, it's conservative, particularly on the most important, most significant revenues and expenses, and particularly those most important to the TIF. It's dynamic, it's a model used in evaluating a TIF through a process, not just a one-time analysis. The city has a very thorough and disciplined process. In fact, it's very often professionals here with the city and in the industry are asked to speak about the city's TIF process in forums around the country, because it's a highly respected process. And Baltimore is greatly respected for the belief that government can make a difference in the economy, okay? And there's a long history here in the city of Baltimore of the public sector working with the private sector. And there's a great deal of respect throughout the country of Baltimore's history in that regard. Okay. I can tell you from my experience in 25 years and working several hundred TIFs, the process that we have here meets the needs and expectations of the clients we have throughout the country. One last thing I want to say about the Tischler-Bice memo. I don't have any problem at all at someone coming in and reviewing our work. I don't have even a problem with someone saying they would have done things differently and they would have estimated some cost of being higher. I just think it's appropriate in that process to provide a balanced review that's also well researched. This project is of great importance to the city, and the issues around this project are of great importance. And there's a great deal of work that's gone into this TIF, not just by Munich Cap, but by city staff and by BDC and their staff. I really think you and the city and all the people at the city that have worked on this and the public deserved an objective evaluation. If Tischler-Bice wanted to evaluate it, I think you really deserved an objective evaluation and not a one-sided evaluation such as they provided. Thank you for giving us this time to speak.
Thank you. Just a second. Thank you. And yes, audience, those who text us, we did allow Munich Cap to take all the time they wished to have. We did not hold Tischler-Bice to a time limit last week, and so respectfully, I thought it was fair to allow you to speak. Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Who are you having that?
What's that? Thank you, guys, for coming today. I really wish you had been here last Wednesday. I had a lot of concerns with the Tischler-Bice book report that they did. I'm a bit confused as to how a firm that's not a registered financial advisor can actually do an analysis in 535 pages, there's 84 pages of analysis. I don't know how you gloss over that, or the fact that you guys use two different scenarios, or the fact that the use of a special tax does not indicate that the project does not pencil out, or that their calculations were developed not using a marginal cost basis. I just, I don't understand how any professional firm can read that and come to those conclusions without not having looked at the front and back cover and just thrown it on the side of a desk. I think it's, look, we can all agree, or we can all disagree on whether or not the agreements that Sagamore has in place with various stakeholders are adequate or not. We're all free to disagree on that. But to, for any reasonable, objective person to disagree with the financial projections and to say it's a risky deal for the city is grossly irresponsible. It really is.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? Would you recommend to the council that we do a third-party objective analysis of this deal?
I would like to point out that we are a third-party objective party. We work for the city. We do not work for the developer. In fact, again, under the regulations we operate under, we would not be allowed to advise you and have a conflict of interest. So the city retained us specifically for our expertise with tax increment financing to be a third-party objective analysis. Not only do we have national experience, as you can see on that, but we understand the process in the city and the history. We understand its budget. We understand its TIF process. We understand the precedence in that TIF process. So I really think you have a very thorough, third-party objective analysis.
Okay. And of course, I'll take that as a no. So of course, as Howard County, you've also done the TIF analysis for Howard County. And the Howard County Chair is, similarly to the Chair of this committee, asking for a third-party objective analysis. It's not a push or pull, it's not a yes or no, back forward. I'm not doing that with you. I legitimately asked the question professionally in terms of your thoughts. Now, there hasn't been a market analysis done, has there?
That's not correct. There has been a market analysis done. There's also in the master plans adopted, there's a market review. And there will be market studies done as part of the due diligence the Board of Finance requires before bonds are issued. They also require market studies to be done, as well as an appraisal, okay? They want those studies done close to the date and time before bonds are issued, so it's the most current information. But the TIF process of the city does require market studies to be done.
Okay. And are they in that market analysis? Is it in the current 534 pages or no?
The market study is not in there. We did review it for checking the assumptions that we relied upon for our analysis, but no, the market study is not.
I'm sorry, because of the, I didn't hear your answer. I'm sorry. Could you repeat it?
No, that market study, as well as the master plans and their market analysis are not, I mean, really, we could get into thousands of pages if we tried to include everything. But the analysis that we did, for purposes of that analysis, we did review that market study, as well as the market analysis and the master plans, as well as doing some of our own research. So it was, the analysis was informed by that, by market review, although the market analysis and study was not actually included in the application.
Okay, but it is available?
Well, obviously, the master plans are available. I would need to check on the market study.
Okay. Councilman Henry, and then back to Councilman Costello.
Thank you. So I'm not going to get into the terminology of independent analysis, since you consider yours to be an independent analysis. So let me ask this. Are you aware of any situations with clients anywhere else that you have in which you have performed a second opinion after another firm has already performed one independent analysis?
Well, what I've done quite a bit is when a developer would prepare, like, they would hire a consultant to do some kind of analysis or fiscal impact analysis. And for example, I mentioned, you mentioned Howard County. The developer there actually did do their own fiscal impact analysis and market study. And the county had us go review that and critique that. So I've been in situations like that. I haven't been in a situation where a local government hired us, and then they hired someone else to come in and review what they hired us to do to begin with.
But has there ever been a situation where a local government hired someone else, and then they hired you to come in afterwards?
Not that I can think of.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just to confirm, there was a market analysis done as part of the master plan, correct?
Well, the master plans themselves included a market analysis. There was a separate market study done for the proposed development. One other thing I want to point out, because I think it's very important to understand about market analysis, this project is going to be driven by Under Armour's expansion. A 4.3 million square feet of office, 3.9 is intended to be Under Armour's headquarters. That's going to be driven by their expansion. It's not something that would really be evaluated by a market study. There has been a market analysis and market study done, but it's important to understand what's going to drive this project. The purpose here is to create a place so that Under Armour can stay and grow in the city, and that's what's going to drive the development.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments, questions, colleagues? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Back to the list, and we're still in last week's list, but we'll seem to be moving actually quite fast. Jermaine Jones. Did Jermaine speak last week? Okay, hold it. Jermaine, you spoke last week. I got it. Molly Amster. Greg Leroy spoke last week. Courtney Jenkins. Noah Salas. Is he on? Did you sign up, sir?
Are you signed up for tonight? Yes.
We'll get to you. When we get to your name, we'll, okay. Let, okay. Let the Chair try to run the rest of the meeting. All right. Are you, either of the people I just mentioned? Okay, thank you. You get two minutes each.
Hi, my name's Dr. Gwen DeBois. I'm speaking for Jews United for Justice.
I didn't hear you.
From Molly, and sir.
Is it Molly?
Yeah.
Okay, speak right into.
All right, can you hear me? Yeah, I'm speaking for Molly.
Okay, I'd rather Molly speak, not speak for Molly. Is Molly here? If you wish to speak separately, please sign up.
I actually have signed up, if you want Molly to speak.
Well, wait for your name, please. I'm just trying to be as fair as possible.
I'm Molly, and the folks at the front said that she could speak for my organization.
No, no, she can't. I'm the Chair. If you're Molly and you wish to speak, please do so. If you're, no one speaks for Molly but Molly tonight. I'm not trying to be a jerk. This is just what we're going to do.
All right, we'll wait then.
Thank you. All right. Greg Leroy spoke last week.
Okay, I guess I am going to speak, if that's all right with you.
Okay, fine.
So I apologize for that. My name is Molly Amster. I'm the Baltimore Director for Jews United for Justice, and we organize Jews to help win local social, racial, and economic justice campaigns. In our two years here in Baltimore, we've engaged nearly 600 people. JUFJ is a member of People United for Responsible TIPS, Tax Breaks, and Transformation, Port Three. And we have grave concerns about the fast-tracking of this deal, the lack of independent financial analysis of the proposal, the lack of knowledge the city has about the impact of previous TIFs, which were a fraction of this size, and the serious absence of affordable housing for those who need it the most, those making less than 30% of area median income, AMI. 50% of Baltimoreans are in that income bracket. If we're investing hundreds of millions of public dollars in this project, shouldn't it benefit them? In last week's Torah portion, Parshat Pinchas, the daughters of Zalos Sophia stood to demand justice and receive an inheritance from their father's estate, which was prohibited at the time because they were women. The Torah says they came forward to right a wrong. They came forward because they trusted in justice. They came forward and they stood their ground. Historically, we know how much was stolen from our black brothers and sisters, and it has to stop. This inheritance includes decent affordable housing and jobs, decent schools, and that, those should be part of how you decide whether or not this is a good deal for Baltimore. We ask you, our city council, our negotiator at the table, to stand your ground too. A good businessperson would never accept the first offer, and we shouldn't either. We implore the city council to slow down. We implore the City Council to slow down, get independent financial analysis, and negotiate for conditions to assure that Port Covington is an equitable and inclusive development. Sit down with representatives of Port Three, Build, Bridge, and Build Up Baltimore to come to agreement on safeguards and community benefits, take those back to Sagamore, and negotiate the best deal possible for all Baltimoreans. The choice is not development or no development, Port Covington or no Port Covington. It is whether the City Council, whose job it is to represent the best interests of the city and its residents, stand up and negotiate for the best deal for all Baltimoreans.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Amster. Courtney Jenkins. Courtney Jenkins. Noah Salas. Antoinette Mugger.
Good evening, City Council, Build, and citizens.
Please.
Good evening, City Council, Build, and other citizens of Baltimore. My name is Antoinette Mugger, and I am a Registered Nurse Case Manager, a resident of Harlem Park West, and a Build leader. Harlem Park West is in the blighted west side of Baltimore City. It is in close proximity to the blighted Sandtown Winchester. As a matter of fact, Sandtown and Harlem Park share in unemployment rates of 1 in 5, a life expectancy of 6.5 years shorter than any other communities in Baltimore overall. And the residents of both communities are more than twice as likely to be killed than residents in Baltimore overall. More importantly, Harlem Park and Sandtown Winchester lead the state in the number of persons incarcerated. According to the Justice Department, 458 persons are incarcerated from my community at a cost of $17 million a year. This is an urgent situation. When we spend funds like $1 million approved today by the Stadium Authority Board to look at a study to expand the convention center, but not neighborhoods, we create a clear path for recidivism. We also create a clear path for more persons to become a part of the prison system. Council President Young, on behalf of Build, we thank you for agreeing to stand up to make this the best deal for our city. We are committed to supporting you, but not with a deal that is not agreed upon by the citywide community benefit agreement. And you committed to no deal without Labor and Build. This is the type of leadership our city needs to make our communities, to make sure that our communities are not left behind, and we truly can build Port Covington together. But when we don't have the leadership, we end up with a city that is divided between the have and the have-nots.
Ms. Mugger, give me the rap, please.
Are against fair and equitable development initiatives that are inclusive. As a former homeless person, I urge you to build one Baltimore.
Stanley Tucker. Zach Medaniels. Courtney C.D. Witherspoon. Christina Duncan Evans. I think it's a duplicate, Trina Ashley. Okay. Leila Campbell. Diane Corbett. Mike Davis. Oh, Diane Corbett, hi. Mike Davis would be next. Good evening.
My name is Diane Corbett, and I live in southeast Baltimore. I'm learning more and more about this TIF. I didn't know about it until a couple of months ago. And now I'm looking it up and everything, and the TIF was originally for distressed neighborhoods and blank neighborhoods to revitalize it. And I think we should go back to that original thing, because it has gotten out of hand where multidevelopments, good, you know, influenced neighborhoods are getting most of the money, and the blank neighborhoods are still being left dispersed. And I am not for... Not in a disagreement of building Baltimore back up, but if we're going to use the TIF, I think we should also put money in at-risk neighborhoods in Baltimore City, so we can help revitalize the neighborhoods, build new schools in Baltimore and in the south part of Baltimore, like Cherry Hill, Lakeland, Brooklyn, Westport, Mount Wining, and Pigtail areas. We need new schools in those areas, and also new houses. I'm tired of seeing us saying that, you know, build it, build parks. People cannot live in parks. When it gets cold outside, people cannot live in parks and stuff. We need new houses. We always talk about the vacant houses. Maybe with Port Covington, with this TIF, you can help us bring back the Dollar House project, where people can renovate these vacant houses in Baltimore and put families back into homes. I would like to also ask Sagamore to help the neighborhoods to put together a safety patrol, like Downtown Partnership, where we can patrol our own neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett. Mike Davis here. Jen Faschetti. Gerald Jackson. I think Charlie Carter. Yes.
My name is Charlie Carter. I'm the Executive Director of Maryland Working Families. I'm also in the leadership of People Organized for Responsible TIFs, Tax Breaks, and Transformation, Port Three. It's a coalition of organizations and individuals who work in communities across the city. I'm here today on their behalf to urge careful consideration of the Port Covington TIF. We started out tonight to tell you to slow it down, to slow your roll and don't steamroll Baltimore. I really want to take a moment to thank you, Council President Young and Chairman Stokes, for adding time for us to consider and to hear the public outcry and public concern about this issue. Thank you. But it's not just important that we take the time, it's important that we get it right. To date, you've heard a number of serious questions raised about how the investment of such a large amount of money in a single project at a time when there are so many pressing infrastructure needs across the city. Greater still is the question of why we would even consider such a large public investment without leveraging that investment to get the biggest returns for taxpayers. You heard earlier tonight that over the course of this project, Baltimore City schools stand to lose $1.5 billion. But also, it's not a choice of development or no development, Port Covington or no Port Covington. It's whether this council will impose the conditions that assure that Port Covington and all future development is equitable and inclusive. We believe that with a robust citywide community benefits agreement that contains the provisions supported by Port Three, Brace, Build, Bridge Maryland, and Build Up Baltimore, that we can lay the groundwork for a really thriving city. The sheer scale of the Port Covington TIF...
Ms. Carter, I'm going to need you to rap, please.
Certainly.
Thank you.
The sheer scale of this development sets standards for all future development. If we don't ask for what we need in this, with this $535 million, it will be nearly impossible for us to demand more from another developer coming forward later, at a later time. If you have any doubts, ask DC. Just travel down the road, where they faced lawsuit after lawsuit after lawsuit because they didn't set their standards and then decided they were going to change the game midstream. Let's not do that. Let's get it right the first time. Thank you.
Ms. Carter. Ms. Carter. Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'd like to just reiterate what I said before. We can disagree on whether the agreements or the concessions that Sagamore has made are adequate or not, but we can't continue to dispute the facts. The figure of $1.5 billion in school funding, what our Department of Finance and Baltimore City is telling us is $315 million. We can dispute whether or not an agreement around certain things is adequate or not. We cannot continue to dispute facts, and that is a fact. $315 million, not $1.5 billion.
Thank you, Councilmember. The figures that we're using come from the Department of Legislative Services of the State of Maryland. The State of Maryland, those are the people who determine how much money we get. It's not the Finance Department of Baltimore City. In fact, if you go to the hearings in Annapolis, they will tell you they don't trust anything the Finance Department of Baltimore City has to say. So with all due respect, I have to use the figures provided by the state. Thank you.
Point made on both ends. Councilman Henry.
Actually, can I get a little bit of clarity on that? When you say that the $1.5 billion numbers come from Annapolis, I just want to be clear. Are you saying that the state did these calculations at someone's request? Or are you saying that some third party extrapolated this number out of numbers that came from Annapolis?
I am suggesting that the Department of Legislative Services came up with an analysis that for every $100 million that this city gives away, the school funding is impacted by a million dollars.
No, just to be clear, they did a calculation for a particular situation in time in which that ratio held true. I was not aware that they had said that this is a number that is good for us to extrapolate with out into infinity.
I believe that their analysis was the impact in general of TIFs and tax subsidies that deflect revenue from coming into the coffers. I cannot attest to how it is that they calculated that number.
Okay, fair enough. So that you know of, have any state delegates or state senators asked DLS to do their own calculation that would be project-specific?
I do not know if any of our state delegation has made that request, but I can get that information and come back to you.
He said, looking to see if delegate Cory Booker... Okay. No, just... Okay. Do we have any... Do we have any state delegates or senators still here in the House? I know I've seen some earlier.
Councilmember, I did see Cory McCray. He's left. But I do think this is an excellent request to make of our state delegation, and I'd be happy to do that unless you'd like to do that.
Nope. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Costello.
Again, I take issue with the figure. It's based on a methodology that assumes that...
Councilman Costello, please, just go through it.
The methodology is weak. It's based on an assumption that the amount of money that is, as you characterized it, quote, "given away" by the bundle of $100 million, is what drives the amount of school funding that we receive. Instead, it's actually based on relative wealth, which is based on a very complex formula, and you cannot just use some simple formula that DLS came up with and apply that to $100 million, and however that is extrapolated out of the total value of the development. The math just doesn't work.
Thank you, Councilman, but what you cannot also dispute is that every time we have a TIF, it results in a decrease in funding for our schools. And there is no... You cannot argue that $535 million and an increase, and the repaying $535 million will not result in a serious... Whether that number is $1.5 billion, whether that number is $200 million, whether that number is $500 million, the point is, is that we already struggle to maintain the effort and our investment in our schools, and it is your job, the entire council, to make sure that if we are entering into these kind of development deals, that we are holding our schools harmless. We cannot continue to say that the state is going to bail us out, because the state is not going to bail us out. We've already seen that when the governor cut $25 million from our budget. So that is the point that we are in agreement on.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. My colleague... Certainly, we understand the point of holding education harmless. My colleague's point is that we need to bring before us the factual numbers, rather than... Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. We appreciate it. Thank you so much. Is Shorty Davis here? David's not here. Is this... Can you read that? Mike Black. Again, those who have written testimony, it would be better that it's in and on file as being on the record. Please, if you have the written testimony, it would be helpful to us as we begin deliberations. Joe Jones. Greg Simmons. Jose Xavier. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Joe Xavier, and I thank you for letting us come and speak today, everyone here, on behalf of everyone. This series of testimonies were focused on tough issues fueled by years of reasons not to trust. I thought Build and many good community advocates, along with choice and many union groups, spoke both with eloquence in their presentations and passion in their purpose. Having attended the July 18th Build meeting and having sat at the same table as several choice leaders, the concerns are legitimate and the issues, they are real. Some, I believe, can be addressed within the current scope of Port Covington, and others, I believe, are beyond the scope of any TIF for property development, and instead will take years of working together to overcome those challenges. A portion of the solution is the targeted effort of the city and charitable organizations, along with community groups and industry groups, working together with a long-term commitment to inspiring, training, and supporting city residents with the opportunity. And I emphasize "opportunity," not a handout. An opportunity to earn... An opportunity to earn a solid job with a strong path to the middle class. You've already heard about Project Jump Start, so I'm not gonna repeat that testimony, which I thought was very inspiring, but Sagamore's Workforce Development Initiative, among other groups, pulls in Project Jump Start in an effort to fully include other parts of Baltimore into Port Covington. For Project Jump Start, there are two locations. The original one is six blocks north of Johns Hopkins Hospital. The second is across from Pimlico Racetrack. So while the partnership with South Baltimore 6, SB 6, takes care of Sagamore's closest neighbors, the Workforce Development Initiative includes all of Baltimore. For Covet, for Port Covington, I think we should focus on what is possible and what can happen when the city and groups that have testified with long-term vision can work together. I know I'm running a little bit short on time, and it will skip through a lot of this.
Yeah, so your time is, is up.
Okay. Could I speak on the PLA point?
Your two minutes is up. We gotta be fair with everyone.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Douglas Armstrong.
Actually, I was the next name on the list. I'm Daniel Pontius.
They have Douglas Armstrong. You're...
I was the name that he read after the gentleman just before.
Okay, all right. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
So my name is, is Dan Pontius. I'm a member of the Cathedral Build Chapter, there's a bunch of us here tonight, and a proud resident of the 4th District, but I'm speaking mainly as a, a parent of Baltimore City students, school students, for the last 13 years. My son just graduated from Baltimore City High School. And I've noticed, as I've been a parent, the schools struggle every year. I wanna follow up on the schools point that was made by the last, couple speakers ago. And just in the last two years, because of increased wealth in the city that's not coming along with increased tax revenue, we have lost more than $30 million just over the last two years. And if you take that loss, that rate of loss, and extrapolate it through the, the course of the 40 years of bonds of Port Covington, that comes out to $1.5 billion. So that's where that number comes from. Originally, I just wanna respectfully disagree with Councilman Costello that the, the $315 million, that's not a fact. That is a calculation based on a set of assumptions, and assumptions don't always bear out. So, for example, the first analysis, the first application of the TIF, assumed that the state formula would just get fixed. It did no analysis whatsoever. And it's a good thing that they didn't keep going that way because the fixes that are being discussed by the state body that's supposed to come up with a fix, they're talking about a 60% fix, not 100% fix, for up to 10 years, not 40 years. These bonds are going to last for 40 years. So fortunately, Municap and, and Board of Finance came back and later on did an analysis that came out to $315 million. I was in the meeting, Councilman Costello, where they went over that. And, but I'm concerned, I, this is where we come back to the Build stance, that we need a, an independent analysis, a much better analysis than we have just now. And I just wanna come back. I know Municap criticized Tischler Vice, but that, this idea that you need a narrative to explain your assumptions because assumptions are not always correct is really important. I have dug through this analysis.
Dan, I need you to wrap up.
Okay. So I just, well, that's the point. I'm not convinced that this $315 million misses other aspects of the state formula where we're gonna lose revenue. And so, I just wanna encourage you to take the time, do an adequate analysis, so we make sure that we are not paying for infrastructure at Port Covington at the expense of schoolchildren all across Baltimore City.
Okay, and you have, there's a, there's a question for you from Councilman Costello.
Dan, I, I just wanted to thank you for, for what you said, and, you know, I know that was an educational meeting for both of us when we talked about the, the school funding, and it, and it's something that's very important. That said, I also think it is important to note contextually that the project is expected to generate $1.7 billion in revenue, and that's on the conservative side. It could be as high as $2.6 billion, according to Municap. So I, your point is well-taken. I definitely appreciate it, and I, I think it's an important issue to discuss, but I think when we talk about the 350, the projected $315 million, it's important to discuss that in the larger context of how much revenue the, the total project is expected to generate.
Right, and the $300 million takes that net down from 1.7 billion to 1.4 billion. All I'm saying is I don't think our analysis is done. I, I think every, you know, everybody here who's saying this is not ready to go is saying this analysis is not enough. We need to make sure it's right. A lot of people need to look at this analysis. We need to make sure that we know what the assumptions are, and that we're comfortable with the assumptions, because we're gonna have to live with this for 40 years as a city.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. Next up, Doug Armstrong, and then after that, Kim Trueheart.
Thank you. Douglas Armstrong, 2828 North Howard Street, resident voter, property owner. I would like to quote from the Charter, Corporate Entity, Section, Article 1, first item. "The inhabitants of the city of Baltimore are a corporation. I'm an owner of the corporation." I'm going to object to the arbitrary two-minute limit given to public testimony, especially here on the second day of this hearing.
You have the right to object to it, but not to exceed it.
I will play that game. I wanna also bring your attention to the Baltimore Charter, Section, Article 1, Section 6, Uniform Taxation. "The taxes, the taxes levied by the city with respect to ownership of the same class of property or property rights shall be uniform in rate throughout the entire city." And I also wanna point out a couple of things from TIFs. The first one being that the mayor's, uh, excuse me, Article 62, or Section 62, Article 1, in general, "to borrow money by issuing and selling bonds at any time and from time to time for the purpose of financing and refinancing the development of an industrial, commercial, or residential area in Baltimore City." And that application of proceeds, "all proceeds received from any bonds issued and sold pursuant to this section shall be applied solely for," and it lists five items, and then six, "construction or rehabilitation of buildings," that such buildings are, "will provide units of affordable housing." And lastly, I wanna point out the 2006 Master Plan for the City of Baltimore Growth Promotion Areas. I don't see Port Covington in it, but I do see nothing being done in the way of TIFs for all the growth promotion areas that are listed, which seem to have languished since 2006 with no investment. And I will finish up with, the city has a master plan but does not have a comprehensive transportation plan, and therefore is really in no position to, to do this TIF and the development plan since you need a transportation plan in order to enact this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Trueheart. I believe after Ms. Trueheart, we're gonna be followed, we, we have a panel from SB 6.
Good evening. As my representation in the city council, I need to be clear. Your job is to serve the citizens, okay? And you have failed to do that on numerous occasions. This TIF opportunity, like the last large one for Harbor Point, requires your due diligence, and I don't see you doing it. You're sitting here asking us to give you data to make decisions. And if that's the case, and if we had to do the work for you, we don't mind. Okay, but you better give us the information that we need. Talk about transparency and the lack thereof. You know, I got thrown out of the Board of Estimates meeting by the council president because I demanded that the reports being generated by the Memorandums of Understanding in this deal get put online for the public's purview. I demand that. And nobody wants to address the transparency issue, but that's your job, okay? This Municap presentation that we just got, I want the reports available for us to look at. I don't need you to put some slides up there and try to interpret for us. We have brains. We are capable of interpreting on our own. Every document that is a underlying piece of this deal needs to be made publicly available. Not next year or 10 years, now. Put them online now. As far as I'm concerned, you know, there are so many issues that have not been addressed. We're getting a 100-acre gift from Sagamore. Who's gonna pay for maintaining 100 acres of new park? Who is gonna pay for it? Property taxes of those who live around the community, are you gonna put some escalation controls in place so that folks aren't going to be moved out of their homes because their taxes went up? Right? You know, this conversation is only beginning, and I recognize you've only given me two minutes to talk here, okay? But when is the next workshop where we're gonna sit down in earnest and address the deficiencies of this whole concept? Now is the time, now is the time to establish the new normal in Baltimore, okay?
Thank you. I need you to wrap. I need a wrap. Councilman, Council President Young.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. All due respect, Ms. Kim Trueheart, you were not thrown out of the Board of Estimate. You were asked five times, five times, to be respectful so that anybody else can hear. So, tell the truth.
You threw me out. That's the truth.
Well, the next time you disorderly, we're gonna ask you to leave again. Thank you.
Well, you know, as long as you are inept and incapable of serving us, I'm gonna be disorderly, all right?
Okay. Thank you.
And when you be disorderly, you will be escorted out.
Thank you. There's 130 people before you. Thank you, Ms. Trueheart. We will be putting up the documents that you're asked about tomorrow, as a matter of fact. So, I need Michael Middleton and the SB 6 panel to come forward, please. And again, Mr. Middleton, you can either come to the table or speak from the podium.
Mr. Chairman, I think we elect to speak from the podium.
You're good. You have 10 minutes, please.
Yes, and with me, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. President, members of the committee, are Kia Callaway from the Lakeland Community, Andrea Mayer from the Brooklyn Community, and James Austin from the Westport Community. My name is Michael Middleton. My name is Michael Middleton. I'm chairperson of the Cherry Hill Community Coalition, and I'm spokesperson for the SB 6. The SB 6 Coalition is comprised of the six communities surrounding the development in Port Covington. I believe, Mr. Chairman, that we will be the people who will most often and most directly be affected by this important development. We see it as an opportunity for those of us who, over the last 70 years, have served as an arm pit of Baltimore City. I say to you what I know as a matter of fact, of growing up in public housing of Cherry Hill, having from 100 yards from my house, having nothing more than your city dump to come to. Cherry Hill Community and the communities of South Baltimore serve as the place for your incinerator. We have the highest density of public housing existing, and in 1980, existing are greatest density east of the Mississippi, as I believe. We have served all the negative aspects of Baltimore City, and the one opportunity that comes to South Baltimore, that the folk who are most deprived and most depressed...
Mr. Middleton, Mr. Middleton, I have to ask you to speak to the...
I will, I'm sorry.
Committee, thank you.
I'm sorry. For those who have been most depressed and most deprived are asked now, at this particular point, to wait, to wait. The council has been asked to slow up this matter. Let me tell you that the members of the six communities surrounding Port Covington ask you to act with all due speed, because we find it difficult to tell children who don't have a place to get fresh produce or meat, because we are a food desert, to wait. Because we find it difficult to have children for a community, that have children who suffer from a lack of a good education, to wait. We find it difficult to have individuals who live, who live in areas and shelters made up of cement and concrete, bungalows, barracks, because they cannot afford to live anywhere else. It is difficult to tell them to wait. No, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have waited too long. Ask any of the members that come before you, how many of them live in South Baltimore? Ask any one of them, how, how many of them have to wake up and look across the middle branch to Port Covington Development, and who would say then, "I can continue to wait." For those individuals who approach this podium, I ask them to walk in the shoes of those individuals that lived in the very community that will be affected by this, to wait. At this time, I turn over the rest of the podium to my colleagues. James.
Good evening, council. I'm not as eloquent as Mike in speaking, so I'm gonna stick to the little script I just did on my smartphone, right? And, um, so, as a member of Westport Community and SB 6, I support the TIF. It's a seed of economic and social progress that has presented itself. It is known as Port Covington. I see this as a seed of social and economic progress when I see there is a standing $10 million agreement between Sagamore and the city, a standing $39 million community benefits agreement with six Baltimore communities known as the SB 6, which includes communities surrounding the Port Covington project. The CBA addresses recidivism in our communities, youth development, education, recreation, food deserts, and other things. In express commitment and ongoing efforts to partner with, on behalf of Sagamore, with WNBEs and MBEs, 10% commitment to affordable housing. As we approach this project, I think we need to be realistic about our expectations, and be realistic about how much Sagamore is capable of doing, right? So as this, as City Council President Jack Young stated, if there's any differences, we need to come to the table and air out the differences. If that includes petitioning the state to change the school funding formula, then so be it. Be realistic and try as much as we can to nourish and water the seed so that a good portion of Baltimore City residents can see it grow, reap the benefits, and witness a better Baltimore. And I'll turn it over to Andrea.
Hi, my name is Andrea Mayer. I live in Brooklyn, and I work in Brooklyn. People wanna talk about facts, well, here's a big fact. We used to have a business called Carl Lowery Glass Company that employed many of the citizens in the SB 6 neighborhood. They're no longer in our neighborhood, and when businesses like this go away, people start to fall into poverty. I just want people to remember that. When more businesses that come to Baltimore, the more people get a chance to work and improve their lives. Jobs and education lift people up. That's the fact. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Kia Callaway, and I'm with the Lakeland Coalition. I wanna say that this Port Covington project is gonna bring jobs. We need to put Baltimore back to work. Please do not turn this into a nasty political fight. Please be on the right side of this historic measure. This project will change Baltimore forever in a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just so we're clear, on July 14, 2016, the SB 6 Coalition did sign what we call a historic agreement, a community benefits agreement, with Port Covington as being represented by Sagamore Development. This agreement has not only monetary interest, but we also believe interest that allows us as community members to come to self-determination. We're not asking Sagamore to build our houses. We have committees... We have committees who have interests in the build, in building houses in our communities as we want them to be. Uh, this is an opportunity for us to acquire the resources to implement the plans that our communities have developed. Uh, we believe that it is an agreement that will satisfy all communities, making Sagamore not just a developer in South Baltimore, but a partner to the communities in South Baltimore. We would be very, um, pleased to answer any questions the members of the committee may have of us at this time.
Thank you. Uh, we appreciate, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it. Sir, is there security? Because we will not have the dis- Where is there security on this floor? Where? Where are they? Okay, miss, miss, is there, council members?
And just so we can conclude, sir, um, Mr. Chairman, I'm not gonna fight against any other poor community, and I won't have us arguing over scratch. I recognize-
Mr. Middleton, Mr. Middleton?
Yes, sir.
Just please to the committee.
Just look at you, Mrs. Stokes, or Councilman Stokes, I understand that. But I think it's important to note-
Thank you, sir.
Uh, that there are issues, and large issues. Uh, Cherry Hill, Mount Wyandotte, Westport, Main Valley, Seats are poor communities. Many of the communities that's addressing you are poor communities. Uh, I won't be put into a position where I'm fighting other poor communities and people, particularly other poor black communities itself. What I will do is ask, from a historical perspective, how many times South Baltimore had been included in any type of TIP development that's been done? When Harbor East was developed, how many times did somebody say, "included South Baltimore"? When East Baltimore was developed with John Hopkins, ask the question of how many times South Baltimore, any neighborhood in South Baltimore, was included? Uh, I submit to you that this is an opportunity for the South Baltimore community, and our community is by moving in a positive way benefits all of Baltimore City. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Middleton. Mr. Middleton, again, uh, as previous request, if you could, we would like your written testimony. It was very powerful. We'd like your written testimony. You could come in after tonight and, and those of your, uh, your panel. And if you would also forward, uh, a copy of the agreement, we would post that as a part of the bill file. Is that all right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I will try to do my best to comply. Yeah, I will do it.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Reverend Calhoun. Reverend Calhoun?
Thank you, Doc. Reverend Doctor Calhoun.
Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, to the distinguished council that are, that are here, something really has come about in this city for its growth, for a lot of enhancement for some of the people, but not always for all of the people. And one of the issues that has come before us, and I think I need to say this. I've been in this town for forty-three years as the pastor of Trinity Baptist Church. I've been, uh, a part of Bill since its inception. And, uh, we've always been about progressive work, organizing community for the benefit of all of the citizens of Baltimore. I want you to know, and I don't know if the persons from Sagamore are still here or not, but if they are, it is important that they commit, um, to having a, to come to the table for all of Baltimore and just not a certain, uh, group in Baltimore. The council, we're asking that there will be no deal until there is an agreed-upon citywide community benefits agreement. Citywide, not just some sections that have been co-opted, but for all of us. No deal without labor and Bill and other groups that share our belief, and that we will walk through the demands and answer questions together at that table. I want to share with Mr. Costello that, uh, we, we are here, and you are here to represent us in our different districts. You fought, and you were very disrespectful to Mrs. Carter. The way you spoke to Mrs. Carter is reprehensible. It is not right. And in fact, I really haven't met you since you've been elected. I've been in District Eleven for forty-three years. You have never come by and asked me, and you, I mean, I'm available, and we are not to come to you, but you're to come to the ones who have elected you.
Pastor, I need to wrap, please.
You need me to wrap it up? When Mr. Dan Proctor spoke, Mr. Costello, you gave him dignity. We ask you to give Mrs. Carter the same dignity. And we're going to, you need to fight for all of us and not just a few of us in our district. And I'm sorry I don't know you, but instead of carrying the water for those who are part of Sagamore and armor, under armor, I don't wear any much in there, but nonetheless, I want you to carry our water. They didn't elect you. We elected you. And so I'm asking you to understand that even when we disagree, give us respect. And give that black woman respect, just like you did that man. Thank you so very much. Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, and all of the council.
Thank you, Pastor. John Meyer. John Meyer. Andrea Miles Stewart. Gary Thurgillson. Didn't do very well with that. David Bowers. I think Dr. Gomez spoke last week. Irvin Lewis. Janet Blair, is that Janet? Mr. Barrows. Yeah. Robin Dorsey I called earlier, Deborah Kellergreen, I think spoke with, um, Mr. Frazier. Uh, Joshua Matthews spoke with Mr. Frazier. Uh, yak. What's the first name? Ivan Bate? Treshad Jones. And that's our list from last week. Let me have a list from this week. That was great. All right, Andrea Mayer. You spoke, thank you. Christine Thornton. Rodney Nesbit. I think that's a Miss Baylor, Marva, maybe. Baylor, Pelham Avenue. It could be, I, I- What's your name?
Marié Baylor.
Thank you.
I met you at Dunbar, actually, Chairman.
What's that?
I say you-
Oh, you met me at Dunbar?
Yeah.
Oh, thanks.
You probably don't remember, but-
Okay, great. Thank you. Go ahead, you have two minutes, sir.
Yes, sir. Um, well, I am representing the youth of Baltimore City. I am an upcoming senior-
A little closer to the mic or bring it to you if you like.
I am an upcoming senior at Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School, and I represent the youth of Baltimore City.
Of course.
I feel as though Port Covington would be an excellent decision. Why? Because what the youth needs nowadays, more than anything, is opportunities. Also guidance, but opportunities. I feel as though that there are not enough opportunities besides outside basketball courts and open fields that youth plays football and basketball in. I feel as though they need more opportunities than that. I feel like Port Covington would give not only, not only more job opportunities for elders, but also positive influence and more opportunities for the youth. I was actually in an internship at Under Armour about, for about four to five weeks in the past month, and they've taught me excellent skills as far as how to work in a work area of retail and things that, and that nature. I feel as though more youth need to see that, other than than being outside on a basketball court, watching elders or like bad influences. I wouldn't say influences all over, but of course, we do see bad influences. But I feel as though Port Covington would bring, and this is completely impromptu, so be, be cautious in it. I feel as though Port Covington would, in the long run, people are asking like for it to be of immediate effect. I feel as though Port Covington would bring, like, more skills for the youth and put them in a better fut-, have them have a better future as far as knowing skills, job skills, more skills you need for jobs and working things like that. So I feel as though Port Covington would be a great addition, and none of the money will go to waste at all. I guarantee and decree that it will be effective in the Baltimore community.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate you, young man. Kia Callaway. Yes, ma'am. You, you, did I call your name?
Yes, sir, Christine Thornton.
I did.
Yes, sir, Christine Thornton.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to speak for the council.
Stay closer to the mic, thank you.
Um, I, I'm a resident of, uh, public housing also, Monument East. Uh, and I am a small business owner, and I'm speaking on behalf of my, uh, woman-owned, uh, minority enterprise, Chandler, Chandler Enterprises. And I'm, um, I'm asking the council to vote yes on, um, the TIP, and I'm against the PLA. Uh, we need, uh, we need to encourage our women entrepreneurs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kevin Matthews, Max Gorinson. Now, these are people who signed up tonight. Louis Evans. William Washington.
Did you call Max? Max Gorinson, that's me, I was speaking on the panel, he's part of City Garage.
To be honest, I can't even hear you from here.
That's Max Gorinson, he's part of the panel.
Oh, okay. Great. Missed all of that, thank you. So you have a panel?
Yes.
Great. You want to do it from there or from the chair? You want to do it from there?
Um, yeah, we can, we can do it from here.
Whatever works for you guys, we're good. Okay, let's go, though. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, we appreciate your patience, city council and community members. Uh, we represent City Garage, which is in Port Covington, one of the newer developments that is currently there. Um, my name is Jason Bass, and this is Aaron Jones. We represent Trees and Toting Company, a small business in Baltimore City. Um, I like to commend all the passion that I've heard from the speakers today. But we have a strong passion too. We have a passion to go against the grain when everybody else told us we should be barbers, when we should work at Social Security, or we should sell drugs. These, these were the expectations of our peers, everyone around us. They have never heard of someone like us, which is, which looks like them from where they are. We want to produce high-quality travel accessories in Baltimore. We want to inspire the people of Baltimore. Show those people that we walk by every day, that are in our neighborhoods, that, that are void of hope. We want to show them that you can be us, you can be a tailor, you can create things, you can establish a presence that is outside of, of just, uh, your everyday nine to five. You can create your own business, you can be an entrepreneur and truly make it happen. This is, this is a city that was formerly known for fabrics and soft goods manufacturing. We want to bring that industry back. Port Covington wants to bring that industry back. Kevin Plank wants to bring that industry back. Our business is around, been, been around for three years. We used our own money, our own sweat, sweat equity to make that happen. I emptied my 401K to make this happen. We used our credit cards to make it happen, to get to this point. It's not a good feeling to know your 401K is empty. It's not a good feeling to know your credit cards are at their limit. I'm sure a lot of people in here can share that, because we talked about poverty, we talked about having debt. But this is a representation of what that looks like. We give our, we give our all every single day. We had two jobs to make that happen. I was going to grad school at University of Baltimore on loans. I was starting a family at that same time. We love Baltimore, we're born here. Always wanted to be here, we want to make it here. We want to have an impact, like I said, on this city, but we just didn't know how that was gonna happen, and we didn't think that the city wanted us to make it happen. We were gonna leave, we had other options, we had different skills, and Aaron and I were gonna go our own separate ways. Aaron was gonna go to New York, he was trying to get jobs at, at Polo and Ralph Lauren as, as a young tailor. That makes sense for him, that's a great career path. I wanted to go to California to see if maybe I had a better opportunity out there to put my skills to work. But Kevin Plank had a vision. People like Marcus and Damian, they had a vision. At Sagamore Investment, Sagamore Development, they believed in us, they trusted us. And that's why we're able to sit in front of this council and the community members today, which we wouldn't have been able to do before, and give our testimony to support Port Covington. I'm gonna pass this over to my business partner, Aaron Jones.
As Jason mentioned before, we are born and raised in Baltimore City. Um, we've lived in all the neighborhoods that everyone here has been talking about. I've lost friends, family members. Um, I've been told that I couldn't do tons of things in my life. And now, finally, me and Jason have the opportunity to not only fulfill our passion and our dreams, but to help someone else, to give someone a trade. Baltimore City used to be full of tradesmen. My grandfather was an A-robber on carts pushing horses. Under eighty-three was full of sewing jobs. Those things don't exist anymore. Now we can do it and do it our way. This not only will, not only will this give us a chance to give jobs, but it gives us the opportunity to give back as well. We'll be able to give, explore more field trips, give opportunities for children in Baltimore City Public Schools to go places that we'd never even imagined, a little bigger than the zoo and the aquarium. Let's show them something different. It's only been three months, and we've already employed almost twelve sewers. Not only just training, not only just, you know, putting them in a sweatshop, but making them feel like they're a part of an operation and a team. And the only way we could ever do that, and we could not even thank you guys enough, we could not do that without them. If they're helping us and we're giving people jobs, I guarantee you they're gonna help someone else, and they're gonna give other people jobs as well. And don't forget, we are black men from Baltimore City. We love this place. We work hard every single day to make sure we deliver. And we do, and not only do we only look out for each other, but we look out for everybody else around us as well.
I'm gonna say one more thing, now that we're both up here. Just imagine how proud our parents are right now, how proud our peers are.
Yes.
The pride that the city has in us. I can look at my newborn son and feel confident that we're helping him. We're helping to make a city better, make this future better. I got a seven-week-old son. I gotta make sure that I can do what it needs in this city to- to make sure that he's not worried about the riots, that he has an opportunity, that he has an example ahead of him that he can lead that many of the city members don't have. They don't have fathers around like that. I'm able to do that because of them. Because of my own hard work, got me an opportunity to be with them. All right? So I want to thank the city council members.
Thank you.
And support of Port Covington.
Hi. My name is Ryan Dottrich. Mr. Chairman, council members, thank you for having us. We're also at City Garage.
I need you to speak a little louder or bring the mic to you, please.
Sorry about that. We're also at City Garage. We're Busting Boards, a skateboard company. We forgot to bring our boards. They brought their bags. If so, I would have done a trick, lighten the mood a little bit. I started the company in 2001 in Hagerstown, Maryland. My goal was to build a better skateboard. I spent fifteen years building the company. We now have twenty employees, distribution in thirty countries. Over all those years, I've been watching Kevin Plank build his company and just taken so much inspiration from that. During my career, I've lived in several places, New York, Los Angeles, and everywhere I go, people see that Under Armour logo and say, "Oh, man, Maryland." And I say, "Yes, I'm from Maryland." And it is a really cool thing. A couple of years ago, my wife and I moved back to Maryland from Brooklyn to be closer to our roots. Shortly after moving back, my company was actually approached by an Australian business who wanted to potentially buy our company. In the process of making that decision, a friend suggested that I look at what our hometown hero Kevin Plank was doing in Baltimore. When I experienced the concept for City Garage and met some of the people there, the decision to retain the company and move to Port Covington was one of the easiest of my life. Joining this vision in Baltimore has energized our company and our mission as a whole. Here in Baltimore, we've connected with passionate new employees who are helping drive our business into the future. We've collaborated with Baltimore's massive creative community to design new products and campaigns. From our new friends at MICA to our growing network of amazing street artists from around the city, we're working as a community to make amazing things over at City Garage. What's happening at City Garage and what will happen at Port Covington is a unique group of people building things together. The foundry just next door to our shop is a huge deal for our company. And anyone who wants to make things in Baltimore can do that at this community makerspace at City Garage. It's given us immediate access to tools, machines, and knowledge that we've never had and we wouldn't have access to without it. Having this resource in Baltimore helps make Baltimore a leader in innovation. In closing, I'll just say, a year ago, City Garage was a crumbling old bus depot. But today, the four of us and many others are there together, building our dreams and employing others to do the same. A block away, Port Covington sits today as a pile of dirt, waiting for a leader who is here today at Sagamore Development and my hero, Kevin Plank, a guy who could build his company anywhere, but he chooses to do it here.
Good evening. Members of the committee, council president, today I'm here to talk about what I've seen and experienced at City Garage. I live in Fells Point for the last two years. I've spent the last two years of my life bartending and serving out here. I rent a home. I've been somewhat comfortable and I've enjoyed it. I haven't had a career-directed path for myself. I use my skateboard to commute basically everywhere I go. Back in May, I woke up for a brunch shift. It's my Monday shift, basically, on Sundays. I go there. That pays most of my rent. I woke up, stopped at a local coffee shop. While I was in line, there was a guy that approached me asking specifics about the board I had. This man happened to be the owner of Busting Boards, Ryan Dottrich. My friends and I have been skating this board for years, the same exact boards that this guy's been creating since 2001. I met him, shook his hand, got to meet him. I thought it was incredible. Seeing as his company was based out of Brooklyn and I'm here in Baltimore, I looked at him and I asked him, "You know, what are you doing in the area?" He proceeded to tell me that he relocated to Baltimore. We briefly talked about Sagamore Ventures and how you guys had brought him out here from there. On our way out, he gave me his card and mentioned he'd get me on a board that week. I remember walking into work and I was supposed to be setting up the bar, getting ready for the morning and getting everything together. Sat in the corner with my phone composing an email. I think I gave you a picture of like cool skateboarding trick or something, maybe that would interest him. And I remember he said something about a board that he'd get me set up. I immediately got an email back from him within an hour. He said that I could come out the next day. It was Sunday. He said I could come out Monday morning. I worked my shift. I went home, went to sleep, woke up early. I skated directly out there, about five miles, skated all the way out there. He took me, he gave me a whole tour of City Garage and the foundry itself, took me all around. He showed me the print shop. He showed me the foundry, which is a makerspace for people and small businesses to get a leg up. They could come there and pay, what is it, a hundred and fifty dollars a month and they could...
I apologize.
Go ahead.
One of your brothers took a lot of time and I've allowed you the, you, sir. Yeah, you. But I've allowed you to go at least a minute past so far. Because your story is, is one that...
Long story short, long story short, I was bartending and serving. I've, I've run this rat race many times and I've been giving a leg up because Sagamore has brought this company out here. And now I have a future and a career-directed path as a screen printer and a painter at Busting Boards.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Councilman.
I, I, I had a quick question for the bag guys. You, you guys, you do your manufacturing down at City Garage. Do you have a retail place in the city?
We have a retail space opening up this weekend in Fells Point.
In Fells Point?
In Fells Point.
Knocked something up on Chase?
We, we did, we did have that lease, but we didn't have this opportunity before that. So that last part of my 401K that I took out went to leasing that property.
Yep.
We had it for about two months before this came up.
Gotcha. Okay.
We still have the lease. Of course, you know, it's contractually obligated for three years. So we're going to do something else with that space.
Okay. Thank you.
Definitely. No problem.
Thank you all. Much success to you. Thank you. And what's your name, ma'am?
I am Deborah Kellergreen with the Greater Baltimore Black Chamber of Commerce. And I apologize for being late, but we just left our, our board meeting in general.
Wait a minute. Did I call you?
You did, but I was at, I wasn't here because I...
Go ahead, go ahead.
All right. So I apologize for being late. I just came from our board meeting, which was already pre-scheduled. But the Greater Baltimore Black Chamber of Commerce has basically, specifically supports... Or first thing that we want to address is the the, the labor unions, the PLA, the Project Labor Agreement. And we want to emphatically express our opposition to the PLA because we feel that it would be not in the best interest of small businesses who would not have the flexibility and would be put in extreme situation of adhering to, you know, labor unions exclusive. All right. I'm going to read, read from my, I'm going to read from my notes here. So we understand that the PLA is a collective bargaining agreement that applies to specific construction projects. And it pretty much guarantees that the project will employ union labor and pay specific wages and benefits and bring procedures to resolve labor disputes. The Greater Baltimore Black Chamber is in favor of wages that benefit, that benefits Baltimore City residents employed through Port Covington. But we are concerned that Baltimore certified minority and women-owned businesses in the construction trade will be required to hire exclusively through the union. So that is our concern. And this would cause, we feel that this would cause undue burden and hinder small businesses' flexibility from hiring from the existing labor pool in Baltimore. Secondly...
You have to wrap it up, please.
Yes. Secondly, the chamber is in support of the Port Covington TIF. Although we have, we understand that there are a lot of contingencies that can happen twenty to thirty years down the line. We are putting our confidence in the city council and we expect as a chamber to play a key role in advocating for not only small businesses, for opportunities for small businesses, but we intend to have as a chamber a, a strong role in terms of access to capital for small businesses as well as the economic base for city residents as a whole.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Amanda Maminski.
Little tall? Or I'm too short? I'll leave it where it is. All right. Thank you, guys, for the opportunity for us to speak. We really appreciate it. I'd like to put something before city council. Previous...
Your name and affiliation, please.
I'm sorry. My name's Amanda Maminski. I am running for city council for South Baltimore District 10. This will be built in my neighborhood, my district, so I have a vested interest in how this goes. I'd like to put before city council, previous to Under Armour's request, the largest TIF request of this size in the U.S. was the Mesa del Sol project that requested a $500 million TIF from the city of Albuquerque. They got 37,500 homes that housed 100,000 people. They got 4,400 acres of retail, 900 acres for downtown, 800 acres for schools and universities. Look at what we're getting for this $535 million Under Armour TIF. Seventy-five hundred residential units, 200 hotels, 34 acres of retail space, and 40 acres of parks and recreation. Look at what they're getting and look at what we're getting. Okay? This is not to say, I understand the value of Under Armour. They are a valued and valuable employer in Baltimore. They employ a lot of people. They are a part of Baltimore as much as every other person in this room is. And so because they are a part of Baltimore, protect this house not only applies to the residents here, but it also applies to Under Armour. Sagamore has only been around for two and a half years. They do not have the experience with major infrastructure. So I'm asking the city council, instead of granting that $535 million TIF, I'm proposing you open up a public-private partnership with Sagamore. Instead of making that $535 million loan to Sagamore, we make those funds available on an as-needed basis. The city leverages its, its, its procurement engine to get, to encourage other women-owned and minority businesses to participate in the build. By using the city's experience in infrastructure build-out, paralleling Sagamore's vertical infra, vertical infrastructure, we can truly look at this after it's done in forty years and say, "We built this together."
Thank you.
Baltimore is known as a city of neighborhoods, a city of residents, but you know what? We work better when we are one city, one family, undivided. Baltimore, Under Armour is as much a part of Baltimore as everybody else in this room is and we should not set them up for failure by giving them $535 million to a relatively inexperienced firm. We should help and support them, not set them up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Louis Evans. William Washington. Okay, look, at some point, I allowed time creep to happen. So I'm now going to be hard and tight. And when I ask you to wrap up, you've got like five seconds and then that's it, please. Thank you.
Can you hear me fine? Okay, good. You know, tonight, we've gotten into the weeds about figures from one accounting firm and another accounting firm and this state agency and that city agency. And the thing is, we, we're all working with different numbers. We're not working with the same set of numbers because there, because there's never been, because there hasn't been an independent third party looking at this. We have a city, we have a city comptroller's office that is set up just for this purpose. I say that we allow that office to perform its fiduciary responsibility to the city, its citizens, and to its, and to its current bondholders to make sure that this deal is actually workable. Because with any project of this nature, it, it, it's inherently risky because so much time is involved, especially given that it's forty years. Okay? In the first five years, the bonds are issued. In twenty years, we may, or may, we may see, we may start seeing some tax revenue from this project. And in that, and in that, that fifteen-year interval, how, how are we going to meet our basic obligations to schooling, to police and fire, to sewers? We've got streets falling in, in, you know, in the middle of the city and it, and, and, and that has to be, and those issues have to be addressed. It's something that can't wait twenty or fifteen years. We have to know exactly what we're doing. We've got to work with one set of figures that everybody can agree upon and make an informed decision on.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much. Reverend Alvin Gwynn. Pastor, you're here. John Barber we've heard from. Aaron Jones. Aaron, okay. Mike. Housing our neighbors. Is Mike, Mike, did you speak? You went to feed the meter? Did he? I don't know if he spoke last week. Let's wait till he gets back. Mark McQuinn. Mark McQuinn. Andrew Hinz. Ryan Darkrich. Andrew? Sorry.
Hi. Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm a, my name is Andrew Hinz. I'm a Maryland native and lifelong resident and for three and a half years now, a Baltimore City resident. I'd like to ask a couple financial-related questions that maybe could be answered after I make just a, a couple other brief comments about the moral aspects of this proposal. So the financial questions are, what is our liability if Sagamore goes into solvency or declares bankruptcy or if that situation happens? The second question is, as far as the market analysis, what was the worst-case scenario? And I'm, say, say for instance, if there's a thirty percent downturn in property values nationwide or citywide, how does that affect this? So I don't, you know, maybe you can answer those after I have these other comments which go more to the, the moral aspect of this. So kind of a minor thing is, our water quality in that area is failing and we absolutely cannot build a kayak facility in a place where the water is not fit to be for recreational use. Then I'd also like to just kind of bring up the idea of build versus rebuild. There's, the area of Westport is very close, already has, already has a grid, already has a lot of infrastructure. I don't understand why or, you know, why an alternative isn't to... And I might also say, I'm sure has people that would love to live in an integrated, integrated space. Why not someplace like Westport versus someplace new? And then try and wrap it up here. I was very, a little bit disappointed in the tone of the mayor's remarks in that this is kind of a race to the bottom. If Sagamore doesn't get this, Kevin Plank will go elsewhere. And I would like to ask you all, her and Kevin Plank, to be leaders and to, whether we... we build, or rebuild, or build, we need to integrate, absolutely build or rebuild integrated facilities, no ifs, ands, or buts, and the 10%, is not anywhere close to what it needs to be. And as far as building integrated spaces, just do it.
Thank you. Councilman Henry, and then Councilman Costello.
Just do it.
Mr. Hinz, I just wanted to share that one of the questions you raised, I had asked a similar question in terms of, inside the Munich cap analysis, there were, you know, multiple charts that laid out how things were gonna work over the next 40-some years. And I said, how do you, you know, gauge for the fact that there'll probably be some type of recession at some point? Because all of these growth things look pretty smooth. And the answer was that they do assume that there is going to be a recession at some point in that span of time, and so they just factor the total impact of the recession in on their growth model, and then smooth it out over the course of the 40 years.
Okay, thank you for that, but I think it would be helpful if the market analysis, the gentleman from Munich cap kind of hemmed and hawed, whether he had or was done or whatever, that market analysis that he hemmed and hawed about should be put online with the other documents that y'all are putting online, please.
Thank you. Councilman Costello.
You good?
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Ryan Dothrich, Elizabeth Sacks, Sean Davis. Oh, there's Sean, okay.
Mr. Chair, members of the council, my name is Sean Davis, and I'm here tonight testifying as a proud resident of Baltimore City. Not, not for my company, nor the industries that I, industry associations that you may know me for. I come here with 30 years of knowledge in land development, and I spent countless hours working with our city agencies and many of you to make our city better, and to improve the investment climate in our city. I fully support Port Covington and the TIF request before you. The Sagamore Development Team has set a new benchmark in terms of community participation and focusing on those neighborhoods most directly impacted the SB6. It was unfortunate then in prior hearing and in our media that the historic agreement that they reached was really not disclosed and talked about more fully, and it's great to see the SB6 here today and hear their testimony today. They finally, their neighbors of Port Covington finally have a voice and have some resources to rebuild their communities. So I believe the Sagamore Team should be applauded. I ask you to remember three things during your deliberations. Please support those that support Baltimore, including Under Armour and Sagamore Development, who have invested hundreds of millions of dollars into our community. It started with Mr. Plank, whom I don't know, but I thank regularly for keeping Under Armour in our city. It's now turned to Sagamore, who has done some incredible things at the City Garage, at the Broadway Pier, and at the whiskey distillery, and they continue to invest. So please, please support those that support Baltimore. Please focus, the second, please focus on your threshold question. The question that's before you is but for. That is the most important thing you have to ask, and you have to ask the applicant to provide you with the information necessary to address that. There are many people here who have asked many things. A lot of them are public policy issues, whether it be job training for our youth, quality transportation for all, a variety of different things. Those are big, important public policy issues that I suggest be handled amongst the entire council and not pinned on one single development project within our city. Please also ask what if not? It is very important to understand what if this TIF is not approved? I think that's very, very important.
Mr. Davis, I have to ask for a wrap.
This one project is critical to our collective success, but it can't solve all of our issues. We need to solve them together, not under the microscope of one project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. And thank you for, Mr. Davis, let me personally thank you for your work within our city, thank you. Thank you. Who do we have?
My name is Mike Alxness, I believe my name was called when I was out feeding the parking meter. Were you on the panel? I was not on a panel, I signed up individually.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, my name is Mike Alxness, I'm a resident of Pig Town, also a member of Housing Our Neighbors, a Baltimore-based organization that fights for the human right to housing. I'll give you the abbreviated version of my speech since I have a very short amount of time. Baltimore has a longstanding, ongoing housing crisis, and here we are talking about sacrificing public money to build infrastructure that does nothing to address our homelessness epidemic. A pedestrian alley that costs $6 million, multimillion-dollar kayak landings and boat slips, huge parks and absurd artificial wetlands that altogether cost tens of millions of dollars, is this really our idea of responsible development? You might consider these lavish parks to be public infrastructure, but all this means to Baltimore's poorest is that they could have a new place to sleep outdoors. But I think we all know that if people experiencing homelessness were to relocate to parks built in Port Covington, the city would promptly have them removed, continuing its out-of-sight, out-of-mind approach to Baltimore's most vulnerable people. It is literally insane to think that building extensive green space in an affluent community will benefit the people of Baltimore. The conservative estimate is that on any given night in Baltimore, over 2,000 people sleep on the streets. More than half of Baltimore families struggle to pay monthly rent and are persistently faced with the threat of eviction. We need permanently affordable housing, not more gentrification, not more segregation, not more redlining, not more tourism. At least 20% of the residential units created in Port Covington need to be affordable to people earning up to 30% of the area median income, which is approximately $26,000 annually for a family of four. We don't want goals, we need results. The developer has said it is creating affordable housing, but it isn't. Their definition of affordable housing is not affordable to the people of Baltimore. My organization, Housing Our Neighbors, has already collaborated with Chairman Stokes, thank you sir, to draft and introduce a bill that would create this requirement, Council Bill 16-0712. If you are truly interested in doing what's good for the people of Baltimore, if you want to stop telling the people you serve that they need to wait over 22 years for City Hall to make sure the wealthy are lifted up before it can start to lift up the poor, then pass Council Bill 16-0712, which requires the developer to create truly affordable housing at its own expense. And I'll close now, since my time is up, by saying, it is true that we have a dysfunctional inclusionary housing law when it comes to projects of this size, but this does not preclude us from requiring the developer to pay for the creation of truly affordable housing as a fair trade-off for receiving the TIF deal. Thank you.
Last week's hearing is now online, those of you who wish to view it, it is online. Tonight's is being recorded, and within the next two days, this also will be online. Scott Klinger, please.
Someone had told me that you had called my name, I had just came in the building.
What's your name, sir?
Travis Robertson.
We'll look it up.
Okay.
We're asking Scott Klinger to come forward, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Scott Klinger, I live in District 4 in the Lake Yewsham neighborhood, and I work for a group called Good Jobs First, which for 20 years has analyzed corporate tax subsidies, economic development tax subsidies. I really appreciated Mr. Rice being here tonight, and I think his testimony for me opened more questions than it answered. Mr. Rice told us a bit about his firm, and one of the things he didn't happen to mention was that in addition to doing analysis for cities, they also operate 120 tax districts, such as TIF districts, for cities around the country. That's really big money, and to me, it creates a conflict, because in order for them to get that follow-on business that lasts for 30 or 40 years, the TIF has to first be approved. And so I would ask council to ask whether they've gotten a fair assessment, an independent assessment, from Mr. Rice's organization. I'd also ask them to consider Munich cap's performance. Mr. Rice told us that they've been partners with the city for 40 years, and he spoke of that with pride, but that makes him a 40-year partner in the two Baltimores that we've seen. Just, just a couple weeks ago, we learned that the most recent TIF at Harbor Point, the infrastructure costs there have ballooned three times over just three years, threefold. They're having to issue more debt than they would have expected under the analysis that Munich cap blessed. I talked to Mr. Kraus last week after the hearing, and he said that some unexpected things came up that had to be paid for. Taxpayers need to find those unexpected things before we go forward, not after we do. And lastly, one of the most important numbers in the TIF application is the $1.5 billion that the project assumes will come from personal income taxes. Mr. Rice said that 44% of Under Armour's employees live in the city. A lot of them probably live in Canton, and a lot of them are gonna move to Port Covington, but that doesn't bring more dollars into the city, that just moves things around. So this issue of cannibalization of the people living there is something the city council needs to study with an independent analysis. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Klinger. Let me, if I might, I would mention that in regards to Harbor Point, even though the second phase is some three times larger than, it does not change the total amount of TIF. That simply means that they've, yes, taken sooner, more, but at the end of the day, the TIF will not grow to any larger than it is currently. Am I right, Steve? Thank you, Steve. I remembered something, hey. All right, you're right, Mr. Robertson, we did call you earlier, you still here?
Travis.
He left, oh, there he is. Thanks Travis, Mr. Robertson.
Yes. Yes, my name is Travis, I'm a minister, community activist, I'm an educator who started his own school, Word Academy. The school helps young people get their high school diploma, and also helped people, also started a program that helps people learn how to read, write, and I started a reading, writing, and grammar class for those in Baltimore who are unable to read and write, because Kurt Smoak had a saying, "The city that reads, but we have become the city that can't read and is bleeding." I'm also a law student, and I think a lot of what's going on here is criminal. Perphrasing what Dr. Martin Luther King said. Dr. Martin Luther King said, "Civil unrest, civil disobedience, and riots is the outcry of stress, depression, oppression, and those who are sick and tired of being sick and tired." It is the duty of the city council to write and draft up legislation that is going to benefit the citizens of Baltimore City. Why is the city council so ass-backwards? If you are going to approve a $660 million TIF, please have Under Armour Corporation, which is a billionaire corporation, pay for the Charm City Circle leader, House Bill 1401, extended hours of the Enoch Pratt Free Library, summer jobs, new schools, recreation centers, have them invest in real true economic development and community development. Don't invest in Uptown unless you're gonna invest in, don't invest in Downtown unless you're gonna invest in Uptown. Baltimore, Maryland has 65% African-American. Give these people training, apprenticeship, and hope through real true opportunities that will benefit their life. Do not deprive me of my constitutional right, because I will file a lawsuit. There should be no cuts in public services to partnerships with Under Armour. There should be no cuts in public services due to your partnership with Under Armour Corporation.
Mr. Robertson said we have to wrap y'all.
Let you know right now, if we don't get what we want, we will shut it down. And kudos to the civil, kudos to the City Paper journalist, Mr. Baynard Woods, for doing a wonderful article on your Doug and Pony Show last week.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Taylor Branch, Taylor Branch. Chris, I'm sorry, having a problem with reading the last name, on Linden Avenue, Chris?
Streb, yeah.
Streb, sorry. You're on the sheet, sir. Actually, you're next.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Streb, I'm a resident of Baltimore City, and I'm also an ecological engineer, working with Sagamore on the development. In 2007, Baltimore City Recreation and Parks put out the Middle Branch Master Plan, and in that plan, I think they identified a lot of really key and visionary points. Here we have this tremendous resource on the Middle Branch, yet it had at that time no access whatsoever, aside from Middle Branch Park and Swan Park. This plan is consistent with Baltimore City's Recreation and Park Plan, in that it provides 35 acres of park along the water. And there's been, you know, a couple of criticisms of that, which, you know, I find a bit confounding. The, if you look at a lot of cities that are really, you know, just charging ahead, believing in, you know, creating a future, in which people and the environment are acknowledging, there's a health associated with these open systems, or with these natural systems. We benefit from the clean air, the clean water, we benefit from getting the respite, the relaxation, the recreation. These are essential to actually creating a healthy city, and to deny that is denying, is really more of the same, is more of this concrete jungle, that, a hard landscape, that doesn't actually satisfy our psychology as living organisms. So we really look at this project as a catalyst for change, not only catalyst for the Middle Branch, but really a catalyst for the whole civic condition, the whole population of Baltimore City to actually access this water. And if, you know, you can look at Baltimore City Recreation and Parks, there's some amazing programs going on with the rowing, the scooping canoe, but anyway, it's time to clean up the Middle Branch, this project is a catalyst for that, and I conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. Donald Smith. Thank you, sir, for being patient.
Yes, sir. I'm opposed to this deal. As a resident of Baltimore City, it's difficult to conceptualize this. As a former radio host and commentator, as a social scientist, as an upcoming author of a book coming out next month that's entitled, "Gentrification of Baltimore City: The Poor Not Wanted, No Place To Go." There is no affordable housing billion built in Baltimore City. The problem with this deal is that we hear talking about it in the daylight, but the deal was done in the dark. It was done in secret. And we're gonna have to ask the question, who's in charge of development here, in this city? Is it the housing department, or is these private public partnerships that exist, not just in Baltimore City, but all throughout the country? Cities throughout the country are using these TIFs, and this city is gonna run into the problems that some of the other cities are having now, particularly how they're using TIFs in Chicago and other places. They had not been official to the public. Back in 2010, Councilman Carl Stokes, yourself and Jody Landis took part in a panel that looked at 11 TIFs, or pilots that was giving out. The results of that, y'all came up with that, the, out of those 11 TIFs over the period of time that they was in place. of time that they was in place, the city did not benefit, really not at all, for those developed, for those issuing of those TIFs. We're looking at, as we're going to give a billionaire that's on the Forbes list of billionaires, over a billion dollars in tax break for the next 25 years or more, you have city communities in Baltimore City that have been hyper segregated, that has by, has been defunded and divested from by public policy here in this city and by black politicians.
We're going to ask for a wrap, Mr. Smith.
The problem here is that you don't know what you're creating in Baltimore City. You think last year was something. And no matter how many preachers and paid protesters put out in the street, I don't think you're going to be able to stop what's coming next because the disparity is just so wide. And the people who are mostly affected by this, they not here in this room, okay? They've been turned out and been turned off by the politics of this city for so pretty long, so long. It's a sad situation. I think that at this particular point, I'm not against capitalism. I teach my grandchildren about capitalism.
I have to ask you to wrap, or I have to move on. Thank you. And we're friends and I appreciate.
But this deal need to be killed, sir. We shouldn't even be entertaining this discussion.
We have to get a wrap.
Not when you're, not when, not when black people in Baltimore City, when the animals in the zoo live better than black people in this city. It's a shame and we shouldn't do it. Bottom line comes down to it, you be held responsible for the decisions that you make. Whatever happens in this Baltimore City, that's on y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I got it. I'm going to.
I know your mama taught you better.
We still have a few more people and as we move toward wrapping, we're going to recess, not this moment, after we hear everyone. And we're going to have a work session on Tuesday, August 16th, at 4:00 PM. As we speak, it will be in the Karen Room, unless we get the sense that we're going to have similar large audience coming. And we'll come back here. Now, a work session is different than a formal hearing. The council will, the committee will sit and begin to work through what we've heard the last two hearings. We will begin to work on language if we intend to amend the bill in any way. This is a transparent, public forum. So you will actually be a part of the work session as we work through what the final bill might look like.
Everybody doesn't necessarily talk.
Hmm?
Everybody doesn't necessarily get to testify.
Right. We don't have a testimony as such coming through, but you can be involved in the work session. If we're talking about housing, for example, we would expect there will be a panel of folk there who would wish to talk about housing and help us craft language if we're deciding or considering a language. The same for any other aspect of it. The developer will be there and also will have the opportunity to speak too, as they are listening to the language that we would be considering and crafting. And so, of course, the city would be there also. So that first work session will be on the 16th of August at 4:00 PM. At this moment, it will be across the street, back in City Hall, and it would be in the Karen Room, which is the room opposite where the city council's chambers is. If we get the sense that it will be a much larger group, that room holds 250. We've had a, close to 1,000 a week before and some 300 or so tonight. Well, we'll consider that. So that's where we're going. Here we go. Linda Barkus. Andra Kane, I think he's left. Hart Remar, Aromar. Jasper Brown. Tashika Woods. Alan Delaney. Gwen DeBois. Is Gwen here?
Here.
Are you Gwen?
I'm here.
Keep coming.
Are you local?
Okay, give us your name again, please.
I'm Tashika Woods.
Come to the mic.
Tashika Woods.
Okay, would you start, please? Thanks.
Good evening, everybody.
Hold on, did I call you?
No, it's a, I, I.
We're here a part of the trades panel.
I'm sorry?
It's a panel, sir. It's Local 16, it's three of us.
Okay, yeah, panel? Okay, give me three, give me three or more. Let's go, please.
It's fine. Oh, it's fine.
And who are you representing?
Local 16 ironworkers.
Okay. Go ahead. Your name?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Roderick Connolly and I'm a proud member of Local 16 Ironworkers located right here in Baltimore. I trained happily here in Baltimore City to hold the title of an ironworker through a registered Maryland apprenticeship program. And yes, as you can tell, I'm part of the majority in Baltimore, which some may try and call a minority. Much like many other great union tradesmen in this room, we love the great opportunity to showcase our skills and further build this great city of Baltimore. Ironworkers, operators, engineers, electricians, laborers, carpenters, pipe fitters, and et cetera. Through our extensive training, we feel that you, the city council members, are at a critical time to bring unions back to work and back to building. We are here to talk about the taxpayer money to fund projects that we have not traditionally been a part of and how it will benefit the city. I just have to say for years, taxpayers have been contributing to funds for all kinds of projects in our respective trades, but unfortunately, many projects have gone the other way, leaving people who look just like me trying to figure out how to support our families. Also, my local and other locals felt a major hit through the recession, which hurt many of our retired brothers and sisters who willingly gave many years of their lives to make Baltimore look like the city that it is today. Projects like this could greatly help all unions of Maryland for their future workforce, such as myself. Now, to all the citizens of Baltimore, I would like to tell you the benefits of unions. We trained three, maybe four, sometimes five years to bring Baltimore quality work that we are proud of. And I'm pleased to say that I was a part of a class that contained seven out of 10 young African-American men trying to enrich our lives. Yes, Local 16 ironworkers and unions help guide people of all races and creeds to enjoy a better life. Now, with all of our training, we are extremely proud and ready to serve Baltimore, not only with this project, but with future projects in Baltimore City and the entire Maryland. Distinguished city council servicemen and women, this is the task we ask of you as voters. We need your help in the future. And to the people here, one last thing about trained union ironworkers and my brothers in other trades, I just have to ask a question. If you walked into a medical facility and asked the doctor how they got their job and they tell you they didn't go to school, but the company was hiring, would you stay at that doctor's office? No, you wouldn't. So I'm here to tell you all today that I'm a doctor in construction. I studied four long, hard years and my helmet is my scalpel. And let's bring Baltimore unions back to work. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, Councilmen. My name is Tashika Woods. I am also a local ironworker. I'm a journeyman, but I'm also a woman-owned black contractor, so I have my own business. By the name of my business is, I'm sorry, I'm kind of, I've been waiting so long. My company name is Iron Construction and Contracting Services. I was born and raised in Baltimore City in the Park Heights area. I am here because I believe that the building of the Port Covington will bring thousands of jobs to all walks of life and also this will reduce recidivism. Growing up, my peers would always tell me the reason they sold drugs, robbed, or stole was because they couldn't get a job due to their record. I am here today because there are opportunities for everyone to receive training as a skilled tradeswoman or man. 85% of my union members are convicted felons and they make more than some with no record in this, in this city today. I wholeheartedly believe that us as parents that are struggling should utilize these union apprenticeships because most of the time we put ourselves in more debt by not taking on these free programs. These unions are going under due to lack of participation. So at the end of the day, I believe that Port Covington will be something good for our youth, to get more skills, to get jobs, and also their parents to get work also. So I'm for Port Covington.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, City Council. My name is William Beckman. I'm the president of the Ironworkers Local 16 here in Baltimore. And I'm here to support the TIF. I'm here to support it not only for, for the ironworkers of Local 16, but all the members of Baltimore. We've heard some nice success stories tonight, you know, some people that had the ambition to take advantage of an opportunity given to them. And I truly believe this is an outstanding opportunity for anybody that's willing to take that first step and take that step out there and pick it up and go with it. You got to go. I mean, you know, people want to complain, but if you get there, if there's 10,000 jobs, somebody's got to take the job. And that's the way I feel about it and like I said, we're here to support the TIF and thanks Sagamore and Port Covington.
Thank you. Councilman Henry.
Actually, no, no, no. Come, come, come back. I had, I had a, I had a comment for the, for the young brother with the doctorate in construction. First of all, thank you. I do, I appreciate both your input and what you're doing to make, to build Baltimore better. But, but the one thing I would ask is if you're going to come up to us and say that you're speaking for the majority, get that hat off your head. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, sir. Tom Bruins, Tom here? Tom here? Okay.
He had to leave out.
No problem. I got a number of people who have signed in, but they didn't sign in to testify. I'll just read the names. If you wish to testify, you can. Jose Morales, Valerie Cunningham, Ross McCoslin, Betsy Cunningham. I'm sorry.
Is that Morales?
Did you wish to testify?
Yeah.
Your name, please.
Good evening, everyone.
What's your name? I'm sorry.
My name is Jose Morales.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity. And I am a carpenter union member and support Port Covington project as long they work with the union in regard to assure the worker for the project get fair wages, health benefits, and retirement. Also, I support this project if Sagamore work with Baltimore City and community. As an immigrant worker, I would like to work for responsible contractors because at the end of the day, we are the one who ended up getting exploited. Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy Cunningham.
Good evening, councilmembers. Betsy Cunningham, resident of Baltimore City, and I've been a taxpayer in Baltimore City for 38 years. I came last week with a friend to get educated about Port Covington, the project, and also especially the financing because I'm a taxpayer. So I left with a lot of questions, went home, made up four sheets of questions, and started getting to work on them this week. And one of the first things I discovered is that a year ago, Mr. Plank's company spent $475 million purchasing my fitness pal and $85 million purchasing Endomondo. That totals $560 million. It happened approximately one year before he evidently submitted his application to the city of Baltimore to borrow an amount almost equal to that. I like the way he thinks, but I'm not willing to finance what he wants to do. He could have spent his $560 million on Port Covington. I don't know who manages his books, but that's not the way I run my books and I wouldn't be able to pay my taxes if I ran my books that way. And I'm very concerned about whether he's going to be paying his taxes and what good the finance department told me the backup is, not to worry because we can always have a tax sale. I don't think that does us any favors as taxpayers in Baltimore City. We have a huge inventory of properties that have been sold at tax sale. Nobody wants them. So I'm here to say I do not think there should be a rush to push this through. I think a lot of due diligence needs to be happening. Other people have told that to you and I want to second that. I also did a quick plan record search and I found no indexing for Sagamore Development Company. No listing. The last thing I want to say is you've also been told or suggested in writing and in testimony that there's a, you should add to this, you were looking for wording, to prohibit any firm from participating after, if they give advice to the city, they should not be allowed to participate in any contracts coming out of the Port Covington deal. And I would add to that, that you should also add individuals or members of their family. They have a direct conflict of interest. If they're offering advice to the city about whether you should go ahead with this, they should not be able to get any contracts or benefit from it.
Thank you. Matt Bolod.
First and foremost, thank you, Chairman and committee members, those of you that remain. And thank you to everyone tonight, especially the folks that are still here. It's a true testament to the city and to you as individuals and your passion for the city. I'm a little timid to speak actually after the last speaker because I represent a general contractor local to Locust Point and we would love to get as much work from Sagamore Development as possible, but we're proponents obviously of the Port Covington project. So rather than wearing my Southway Builders hat as one of the principals there, I'll actually speak to you as a lifelong Baltimorean who was born and raised just in North Baltimore, a few blocks north of Erdman Avenue, if you're familiar with that area. Before I go there though, I do want to go back almost two hours ago, maybe three now, I don't, I've lost track of time. Mr. Chairman, you asked a question about PLAs that I think bears a decent response. They're not discriminatory. I think that's an improper adjective to describe them. They're exclusionary. Discriminatory would suggest that there's some sort of implication that excludes people or companies for a reason. I say they're exclusionary because they actually, given in Baltimore specifically, they're exclusionary, 90%, 90% of the companies in Baltimore in the state of Maryland are not affiliated with unions. So if you enter into, and unions should have a piece of this too, don't get me wrong. We give work to unions, they're fine, but if it's just them, then it's excluding the residents, the companies in Baltimore. But real quickly, to my point, I want to speak real quick to the local hiring and it's just going to take me 25 seconds over, I promise. We participate in a number of meetings with Sagamore and it's the first time, we've been in business for 20 years, it's the first time a developer's invited us in and invited other contractors and other people in the business in, and they didn't say, "How are we going to meet the goals of the city?" They said, "How can we establish goals that are going to impact and have real change for the city? We want to be the difference makers. We want to have real impactful change. We want to make a difference in Baltimore." And someone said it earlier, Under Armour has a choice. They could leave this town and they're not staying here because it's cheaper to be here. They're staying here because they're invested in this town. They're invested in the reality that Baltimore is a great city and they believe in this city. We had a big slogan one time, still around, you see it up on the walls. It says, "Believe." And I know it's hard because you've been cheated in the past, we've been cheated by developers, but it's time to believe. Believe in Sagamore, believe what they can do for us, they're invested in us. Believe in Sagamore, believe what they can do for us, they're invested in us, let's be invested in them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to testify? You testified. Yeah, he wanted an addendum. Is there any, before, is there anyone else in the room who wishes to testify? Mr. Barrows, I called your name. Come forward, please. Mr. Barrows?
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir.
I'm Leo Barrows, and I represent the Committee of Concerned Citizens Incorporated, and the Roots of Scouting. And I simply wanna say that, the definition of a pimp, is a man who solicits clients for a prostitute. And it just seems as though Mr. Kevin Plank is pimping all of us. And it appears as though the prostitutes may well be the mayor, and too many members of the city council, not all of them. Now, let me tell you, that you're talking about a 33% water increase, to improve the infrastructure of this city. How can you justify that, in light of a record-breaking TIF? The history of TIPS were designed for neighborhoods, and they flipped the script on us with TIPS, and now the TIPS are going to rich white men, who are the personification, and are doing the bidding of the Greater Baltimore Committee, and the Baltimore Development Corporation, and they run over us like a freight train. Somebody got paid. Somebody's got paid off, obviously. They tell me this thing has been in the works for how long? Four years? And now, when I turn on the TV, they're still talking about, "We will build it together." How many millions of dollars did they spend to say that? "We will build it together," without consulting us. "We will build it together." That is an outrage. Apprenticeship programs, Sandtown Winchester, first and foremost, what apprenticeship programs? How many slots have been allocated for the Sandtown Winchester community, to get those black, young men and women out of poverty? We're talking about downtown, we're talking about the elitists, we're talking about the rich, we're damn sure not talking about poor people. Manufacturing where? Under Armour, Philippines, China, Mexico, Indonesia, Hong Kong, Mr. Outsourcing. Insulting us. Outrageous. And we go for the okie doke, we don't have to do it. We need a revolution, and we need to rebel constructively. I'm not emotional at all. We need a change in this paradigm. Praise God.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. Is there anyone wishing to testify? Is there anyone? Ms. Xavier, have another minute. Just a minute.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to see if we can end this on a positive note, I just wanna talk about, a little bit about the PLAs. And I think, in listening to the debates, and listening to things go back and forth, I think what, in my opinion, I believe what is needed, is fair competition from legitimate contractors, responsible contractors. Those legitimate and responsible contractors are those who properly train their workforce to a high degree of skill, who train them to be efficient and safe, who validate their workforce using programs like I9s and E-Verify, who equip their workforce with proper tools and equipment, and who pay their workforce market-based wages. Additional marks of a legitimate, responsible contractor include licensing, proper levels of insurance, the ability to pass pre-qualification standards, and submit fully qualified bids, without excessive work, work change orders, once the work starts. I think that, together, we can weed out non-legitimate contractors, without a PLA. So if that's at all possible, I would ask the council to focus on legitimate contractors, and not make a distinction between non-union and union. There's plenty of work for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank everyone who's come out tonight, we appreciate. The city agencies who stayed all the way, cam and crew. Thank you. Mr. Kason, everyone else. Mr. Laria, thank you. I don't know what for, but thank you. What did you say?
I want to make a fact, I'm not here.
Oh, oh, yeah, right, I, I, right. Of course. It was a joke, John. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you on the 16th at 4:00 PM. Good night.